Thank you everyone, it is 6:31 PM on Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. My name is Brian Leighton, and the school committee chair, and I am calling the school committee to order. The first item in the agenda is the -- see if you could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is recognition and farewell to our outgoing committee members. I am gonna start us off, but then I will open up the mic to any members of the public, and also the committee, and the superintendent, and any staff as well. First up, Peter is not returning, so I wanted to speak to Peter Beardmore. He brought a sharp mind and strategic lens to our work on the school committee. His financial expertise and deep understanding of systems made him an invaluable resource, especially in times when we needed to make tough, long-term decisions. Peter always had ideas worth hearing and opinions worth considering, and he never hesitated to speak up even when it wasn't easy or popular.
There you go.
Sometimes his candor came across a little strong, but it was always came from a place of passion for doing what's right for students and taxpayers. His honesty, his drive to improve things, and his commitment to transparency have shaped many of the conversations and decisions we have had at the table. Peter's decision to step away to spend more time with his family speaks volumes about his priorities, and I know I speak for many when I say we wish him all the best. His contributions to this committee will have a long-lasting impact, and his voice will certainly be missed, but knowing Peter, his voice will continue to be heard from the public comment mic. Carol Arshinbo was already a dedicated member of the school committee when I first joined, and from the beginning, she set an example of thoughtful, student-centered leadership. Carol has always brought a caring, grounded perspective to our work, especially when it comes to advocating for our youngest learners. She often saw angles I hadn't considered, and was always willing to dig in, offer help, and do the work that often goes unseen but is so critical. I've learned a great deal from Carol, not only about educational policy, finance, and governance, but how to lead with kindness and clarity. I am genuinely a better committee member and a chair because of the time I've spent working alongside her. Her voice will be missed, and her impact will be lasting.
Thank you.
Are we just going down the line?
Anybody who wants to speak, yeah. Committee members, public.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. So, to Peter, I think that all the things that Brian said are true, but I also think that the thing that makes it so enjoyable to be on a committee with you is that you have a really good nature. Like, you know that you're gonna say things sometimes that inflame people's passions, and you are fine doing that, but the thing that makes you different than so many people that do that kind of thing regularly is that you can take it when they do it back. That is a truly great person to have in your corner, and I have often asked you questions, and I have often sought your advice, but really, I just think that it's really fun to know you, because no one else can handle the things you can handle.
Thank you.
Brian, I have been stunned at how good you are at executing on every part of the job. You get everyone involved, you answer every email, you provide thoughtful responses every time, and I know that bodes well for your future, and I wish you all the luck. Carol, Carol, I have enjoyed learning from you and listening to you. I have taken to heart what you said the first time I met you, which is, are you willing to speak for the trees? And I am happy to have known you, and I will continue to speak for the trees. I'm also gonna say this, you are one of the wisest people I've ever met. You just know what the right answer is by thinking about it, being reflective, and being kind, and I hope to be more like that as I get older. I still feel like sometimes I rush to judgment, and I'm impulsive, as I was when I declared I did not want to be involved with the superintendent search.
We didn't believe you.
But I just, I'm so grateful that you are gracious, kind, and you share your wisdom with everyone.
You're here.
Thank you, too. Well, then, it will be my turn. I will say that when I was told that Peter was going to jump from FinCom to the school committee, I said, "How is he gonna do that?" Because I thought he was gonna do both. So I spent all this time trying to trap him into saying, "I can't do both," when he said, "I'm not gonna do both." But I've been delighted to work with you, and you always have a fresh way of looking at things, and when I don't know what government person to talk to, I ask you, because you know all those inner workings. And Brian, I have been continually amazed at how you juggle this job with your three young boys and coaching at school all at the same time. I have enough trouble juggling this job, and I am retired with my husband at home, and that is it. No cats, no dogs, no nothing. So you do, you do what you say you're gonna do, everything gets done in a timely manner, and I thank you so very much for taking the chair this year so that I could take this last year and not do all that stuff. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I've been thinking a lot over the last several weeks about the last six years of my public service, but the last three years in particular, and thinking back to my appointment. I think I had a lot of people wondering what that meant, but I outlined four things that I really wanted to focus on: student achievement, facilities, budget, public engagement/communications. And I've been thinking about if I were to grade those things on a rubric over the last three years, where would I put us? And in totality, I'm a reasonably tough grader, I think, but in totality, I give myself the Ralphie SA score of a C+. And I probably shot my eye out more than once over the course of the last three years. And let's just be honest, you know, I think that there's a lot of work here to do. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished here over the last three years. I'm most proud of the dialogue that we have built as a committee amongst ourselves, but also with the broader Lunenburg government and the public, which I don't think is something that existed nearly to the degree three years ago as it does today, and I'm most proud of that. Carol, you were, both you and Brian, first of all, thank you for being excellent chairpeople of this committee. I am a lot to deal with sometimes, as you both know, particularly when I lock onto something that I just can't let go of. And I know that it's hard to deal with me and keep the train running in a reasonably straight line, and I think that you both did that with extraordinary grace and attention, and you both did a fantastic job. I'm honored to call every member of this committee friends, but both of you in particular, and I thank you, and it's gonna be hard not to do this going forward and not to be part of the committee. And lastly, I just want to thank Dr. Burnham and the entire administrative team and the Your time and attention and responsiveness has been excellent. We have not always agreed, as you knew when I showed up, that would be the case, but the way we've worked together and worked through some extraordinarily challenging issues and times has been truly an honor to learn from you and to work with all of you, and I greatly appreciate that. And to the members of the public, thank you for putting me here for a few years, and I look forward to returning to your ranks, and we'll see what happens next. So thank you very much.
I wanted to say thank you, guys, for so many years of service and for showing me the ropes. I've only been on for two years. Carol, when you were chair, you were scary. You're so sweet, and I think people underestimate and forget, yet you're a grandma. You're very sweet, you're very kind, but you have a backbone of steel, you used to be a teacher, and you will stand up and fight passionately for the students here, and I think I loved that.
Thank you.
I loved watching you go to battle, that was fun. Brian, you've been fantastic, the way you communicate. I like getting the emails, that I like seeing your responses to community members as our spokesperson, because they're always so well-written. I mean, you're a math teacher, and your English skills are great. It was great. So thank you very much, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. And Peter, I love it when you agree with me, but when you don't, it's a little scary how passionate you can get, but you've definitely shown me how important it is when you, in a small town, when you disagree with someone, you can do it in a kind, emphatic way. There's a way to do it and still maintain relationships, and that's definitely one of your strengths. So we got you guys flowers, so thank you.
I don't get flowers very often, so thank you.
Yeah, they're nice.
They're fantastic.
They're beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we do have one more surprise. Since Peter already said it, myself and Peter are gonna continue on and serve in the future, but I tried to convince Carol, whether it was school committee, select board, something, keep going. So I did invite the delegation here tonight to honor Carol tonight. Representative Scarsdale?
Good evening to you all. It is truly an honor to be here tonight, and certainly I'm glad I was able to be here early to catch the comments of, just the conversations between all of you and how you interact and the respect that you have for each other. It is really an amazing committee, and Lunenburg is lucky to have you all. Peter, I will just say, I would not give you a C+, I would give you an A+ for your passion and your dedication and just being N.D. fatigable about such important issues as education and certainly the funding around it. I know it's been an honor to work with you and Brian as well, and I am glad that you are continuing your service to the community. But Carol, I think Laura really summed it up very well to say, you know, you're very kind and you present in a soft and gentle way, but you do have a backbone of steel. And I remember when I first met you, it was when I was running for state representative the first time. Lunenburg was new to the first Bill of Sex because of the redistricting, so, you know, just trying to get out, meet all of the elected officials, understand the community of Lunenburg, and I remember how patient you were. And I came from the Pepperell Select Board, I understood issues with school funding in chapter 70, but you helped me see that issue in a whole new light. And your patience, your breadth and depth of knowledge, your willingness to think outside the box, and how can we solve this, and, you know, what haven't we looked at? That has stuck with me for the entire four years, and I can tell you, I was in awe of you when I first met you, and that never changed for a single moment. I am still in awe of you. The delegation wishes you the best. Senator Cronin and Rep. Kishmerick both had other engagements tonight. Senator Cronin is at the State House fighting for the House's budget on the Senate side, which hopefully will be good news for all of us, but they did send me with citations. To be honest, they're very similar, so I'm only gonna read one and try to merge the two of them together. But "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, and Senate, be it hereby known to all that we offer our sincerest congratulations to Carol Arshinbo in recognition of your seven years of N.D. fatigable commitment and dedication to the Lunenburg Public Schools, specifically to the Lunenburg School Committee. The entire membership of both chambers extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 7th day of May at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, and signed by Speaker of the House, Ronna Mariano, Senate President Karen Spilka, State Representative Michael Kishmerick, Margaret Scarsdale, and State Senator John C. Cronin." I don't think you will have a typical grandmother's retirement. I fully expect to see you out and about and on the streets and continuing to lead with your heart and your beauty, and we all wish you the very best.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you very much.
Yeah?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Representative Scarsdale. Any other comments from the, yes, Dr. Burnham?
I'll let our student rep go first. Thank you. So this will be my second year serving as student representative for this committee, and this goes for everyone, not just the three of you leaving, but for a 17-year-old, I don't zone out at these meetings as much as you think I would. I've learned a lot from you all, how to hold my ground, how to express my opinion, how to speak publicly, and it is very beneficial to me in life. These meetings are actually part of what made me want to go into political journalism after high school. So I just want to say thank you, and that you obviously affect students more than you know, but that, me personally, this has been a big part of my life for the last two years, and I'm very grateful for it, and very grateful for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn? So I wanted to say thank you and echo all of the comments that have been made. I don't think I have much more that can be added, I think everybody covered all that ground pretty well. I would say that I have been extraordinarily lucky to have worked with a consistent board for as many years as I have. I think it's fantastic that you are five unique individuals, and you all bring talents to the work, and I think it makes for a better, stronger board because of it. So while three of you are exiting, soon I will be exiting as well, so I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of you. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and I think we've done a lot of work together. We navigated COVID, several of us, post-COVID, and some difficult budgets. So thank you for your partnership, your encouragement, and your support. Much appreciated. So Carol is known for the Lorax.
True.
Those of you who have been to a graduation or two may know that I'm known for the turtle. So I would like to say this quote, it's an anonymous quote, "Behold the turtle. For him to make progress, he must stick his neck out." And every single one of you, by taking on this role and engaging in every single meeting, you are sticking your neck out. Sometimes that can feel dangerous, but that's how we make progress, and I think that we have made progress. So thank you for your service, thank you for sticking your neck out, and thank you for all the progress that we've made for the children of Lunenburg. You are greatly appreciated by everyone in the school district, so thank you, and you all get a little something.
Why, thank you. I hope it's a turtle.
I was just about to say the same thing.
It's a live turtle.
Hands over the back.
Is it a terrarium?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I address?
Yes.
Quickly. I was gonna make my comment a public comment, but it appears that we did dissent this way. So I just want to thank everybody. The seven and a third years that I've been sitting here has been extraordinarily interesting. I've learned so much about town government. I've learned so much that you have a voice. So people who don't realize it, you all have a voice, and you need to use it. But I wish to thank my committee members who have nothing but the very best in their hearts for the students of Lunenburg, whether it was from my very first committee I sat with, all the way through. Everybody just wants what's best for their kids, for our kids collectively, and that's what we focus on. And when I came to this committee, I was hoping, my goal, was to make some curriculum changes, and I cannot thank Dr. Burnham enough for the curriculum changes that she oversaw and the growth in our district, as well as the staff, the teaching and learning department, the students who work so very hard. Everybody worked hard together to make those changes. And I also wish to thank people for the friendships extended, for people I didn't know before I came. I never knew Liz. I can't imagine how I couldn't have known Liz, but I never did. She is just delightful and knows everything about everything, and I can't thank you enough, because every time I text her with something, "Of course I'll do that, of course I will take care of that," and of course she does. So I wish to thank everyone. It has been quite an experience, and I wouldn't change it, but now I'm stopping, so.
Any other comments from the public?
I'd like to say something, but I'm not sure if I'm bringing it up in the wrong time, I have a safety concern.
So we will have public comment for general public comment. Right now, it's still the recognition of the members who are departing.
Okay, so I guess I will wait for that one then. So I want to say to the committee members who are leaving and who have served this town, thank you for your service on this committee, and besides, thank you for your service, that's about it. But Mr. Beardmore, thank you. Mrs. Arshinbo, thank you. Thank you for your service on the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other recognition, as we'll move on to public comment? So now I'll open it up to public comment from the public, either on Zoom or in person. Yes. Sorry, I think we're gonna start on Zoom first.
Okay.
Justin, if you could just state your name and address, please?
Yep. Hi, my name is, my address is 1147 Mastav, Lunenburg.
Hello, welcome.
I don't know if today was a bad day to bring up a safety concern, or if I should just bring it up another meeting.
No, you can bring up anything.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna respectfully ask the school committee to consider how the new bus speed policy applies in cases where walking to school is unsafe. We live within the two-mile range, but we're on a busy state road with no sidewalks, so walking is not a safe or realistic option. I understand the goal of the policy, that the distance is used as a fair metric, but assumes walking is a viable option, and in some cases it isn't. I'm not here to ask for special treatment based on finances or convenience, I'm asking for a care process that accounts for safety and road conditions when determining who pays for the bus speed. I'd like to ask the committee to consider a safety exemption or review this process so families like mine aren't penalized for this circumstance.
Thank you. We will be addressing the bus policy later on this evening, but thank you for your public comment. Any other public comment from the public?
Jane Hall, 73 Pine Grove Road. I just wanted to compliment the school committee on the process that you have followed as you lead up to tonight, hopefully appointing or making a decision about who you're going to appoint for the next superintendent of schools. I was a little nervous when there was a little hiatus in the, you know, the timing, but I think you did yeoman work, yeoman work, over these last two months to get this done. So I wish you all luck tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve on the screening committee, and attending the meetings was very informative. You have four very qualified candidates, so I don't envy you tonight. The only thing I hope is that in thinking about how you make that decision, that is based on what are the needs of the district and the town, because sometimes we can be very influenced on the type of person I might like to work with, but it's much bigger than that, as you all know, so I know you know that. I wish you luck, and I'm very happy to be here and hear the deliberation that takes place. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnham.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnham. Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public?
My name is John Bowen Jr., 162 Island Street. I have been the only student to show up at all of the superintendent candidate meetings for students. I take that I will be the voice of students, along with my friend Tatum. In my comments to each candidate, I mentioned history about Frederick Douglass, who was a U.S. Marshal appointed by President Hayes, both of whom were against Jim Crow laws, particularly Marshal Douglas, who was an abolitionist. However, they both still upheld and followed the law of the land. In that discussion, I inquired about how critical race theory applies to public education. Mr. Conway stated that he doesn't believe CRT is being directly taught in schools. The answer I got from Ms. Fortuna was directly quoted from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents' Position Statement for K-12 Curriculum and Critical Race Theory. She said, and I quote, "We do not cheat CRT, but we do have a fundamental and moral responsibility to teach history and social science, and in all its truth, the pleasant and the unpleasant." End quote. That is word for word in the last paragraph of the position statement. Mr. McCormick stated that he does not believe CRT is being taught at all. Ms. Menard does not agree with CRT, but she says she will teach standards set by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Massachusetts Department of Education. Focus indicators for teaching that was put out by the Massachusetts Department of Education for the 2024-2025 school year is online, and it identifies ways to incorporate CRT, teaching indirectly by using a set of semantics in teaching. That is just hiding the fact that it is being taught. I also inquired about teachers expressing their own free speech in their classrooms. I mentioned a particular history classroom that is overloaded with one side of history and culture that the teacher does not promote and
The answer I got from Ms. Fortuna was directly quoted from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents' Position Statement for K-12 Curriculum and Critical Race Theory. She said, and I quote, "We do not cheat CRT, but we do have a fundamental and moral responsibility to teach history and social science and, in all its truth, the pleasant and the unpleasant." End quote. That is word for word in the last paragraph of the position statement. Mr. McCormick stated that he does not believe CRT is being taught at all. Ms. Menard does not agree with CRT, but she says she will teach standards set by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Massachusetts Department of Education. Focus indicators for teaching that was put out by the Massachusetts Department of Education for the 2002, uh, 2024, 2025 school year is online, and it identifies ways to incorporate CRT teaching, uh, teaching indirectly by using a set of semantics in teaching. That is just hiding the fact that it is being taught. I also inquired about teachers, uh, expressing their own free speech in their classrooms. I mentioned a particular history classroom that is overloaded with one side of history and culture that the teacher does not promote in equal and fair representation of history throughout the classroom because she is specifically overloading her classroom with imagery and slogans and flags of this one specific social science. I believe that is a teacher expressing her own free speech and expression in the classroom and influencing students based on a personal agenda. Mr. Conway stated he does not agree with teachers promoting their own free speech and expression within the classroom. He also stated that if his, if it is being taught in a block regarding a specific historical or social science unit, then it is acceptable, but the classroom should be balanced. Ms. Fortuna gave me a word salad of avoidance on the issue of free speech. Mr. McCormick stated he is unaware of teachers promoting their own free speech in classrooms, but he believes that it is okay and should be allowed. Ms. Menard also stated that she is okay with allowing teachers to exercise their own free speech and expression in the classroom. In summary, students want a superintendent that leads and takes charge, not someone who is afraid of back and forth conversations or avoids difficult questions. I strongly recommend you select Brent Conway as the next superintendent of schools. He did not avoid answering my difficult questions. He was short answered, straightforward, direct, clear, and concise. Mr. Scullinbrine, he did the same thing with you, um, with the law you raised during your interview with Mr. Conway. He will tell you how it is, even if it is uncomfortable, that as a leader and the person who should be leading our district's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public?
Uh, John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. How are you? That was my son. Um, don't worry, I don't write his speeches, just so you know. Um, I want to say, uh, thank you very much, everybody, for your time, uh, that you've spent here. Uh, it's a long time and it's arduous, and you guys were slave drivers last year, and it was very difficult. So, I don't envy anybody here on this board, uh, for the job and duty that you have to do, particularly this year with the multiple cuts that have to be done and so forth. And I definitely, definitely don't envy the superintendent who's walking into this disaster. Uh, it's a financial disaster. It's an educational disaster. It's a district disaster. Uh, there's buildings that got problems. There's educational direction that's lacking in teaching because of teachers, classroom size is changing and so on and so forth. You guys are all in trouble and you're not going to make this community happy at all with any decision you make. But I'll tell you what, you make me happy, just as long as you do your job. And I just want to say, uh, thank you very much, but I support my son and his direction. I watched all the meetings and I think that Brent Conway is direct, concise, short answered, and somebody that's not going to hand us a bunch of language, but it's going to say, here's the deal. In the exchange of the law that Mr. Scullinbriney was having back and forth with him, and I understand Mr. Scullinbriney being an attorney, he doesn't like to give up a fight or an argument, okay, that he knows he has the answer to. And that's correct. A lawyer will not ans, ask a question he doesn't know the answer to, and he wanted a specific answer. But what Brent did in that exchange is, he clarified, I have not read it in detail, I have no idea, I cannot do that, but I would be glad to discuss it with you later. And I would like to know, and you don't have to respond to my public comment, did you guys discuss that later on and get an answer to that legal question that you guys kind of went through? That's all I'd like to say. And thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Seeing none, uh, open up to public comment from the committee.
I, I'll just provide a quick answer. Um, after the meeting, he clarified, there is a case pending in the First Circuit about the cheerleader scenario but applied to student conduct as opposed to the conductor, the running of a club. And so, the, the First Circuit has yet to rule on that, and he did, I think basically the, the gist was, he was focused on that case and missed the word group in the question. So, I, I thought he, I, I agree with you. I thought he gave a good answer.
Any other public comment from the committee?
Um, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, I would just like to, uh, to comment on the, the discussion last night that occurred at the Select Board meeting pertaining to the discussion around, um, a special election to, uh, to complete the override process. Prior to last night's interview, both Laura and I, um, spoke at public comment, Select Board meeting. The gist of my public comment was that I think that there is going to be, um, additional public outcry, uh, to, to make this happen. Town meeting appropriated that money. Same body that appropriates an omnibus budget, town meeting appropriated that money. Of course, it was subject to the passage of an override vote. Um, but while the Select Board pays regular lip service to the votes at town meeting, um, for some reason, this particular vote did not meet their muster for, um, affecting their decision, uh, to, to put this to a ballot vote. And, and I say this, having been a part of the process where we, as a committee, came forward and agreed that the less bad course of action, once again, was probably to do this as a town override. Um, but there is a process and the public is included in the process. There was a citizen petition, and low and behold, that citizen petition held the day on Saturday, and those who chose to come to town meeting and to vote, voted for it. An appropriation has been made, but there is no revenue to support that appropriation because the public is not being given the opportunity to vote to approve that revenue. That's the mechanics of the situation that we have right now. Um, the situation has changed. The situation is different from the situation that existed two months ago when we met with the Select Board. And I think that the Select Board, in its deliberations last night, um, ignored that reality. I think that, to a certain degree, um, it serves them to make dispersions of the school committee and the school budget, when frankly, our budget has been scrutinized to a degree 10x any other department budget in the town of Lunenburg. There have been discussions around the forecasting and the long-term projections of the costs associated with running the school department to a much greater degree than any other department in the town of Lunenburg. And this is a blocking mechanism on the part of the Select Board, the same blocking mechanism that two of the three members that voted against or, or spoke against this last night used a year ago in opposing the override. And here we sit, nothing has been done. One of those members is leaving and I, I just, I, I don't know what to make of it, but I'm exasperated by a board that claims to represent the will of the people of Lunenburg, but will not put it to a vote. I, I, I don't get it. And, um, we'll see what happens. I, I, I still believe, by the way, this is going to happen. It's just a matter of how long we're prolonging the agony. I think there's going to be a special election. The question is, is how long is the Select Board going to prolong this agony? And this will, the longer it takes, the more disruptive it will be to the school department operations over the course of the summer and fall. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Um, I...
Spisowski?
I would like to echo what Peter said. I also made public comment, not knowing Peter was coming in hot, too. Um, what I had asked for was for the Select Board to choose, either act immediately on bringing an override for FY26, or as a compromise, if they're not inclined to take action now, to start work towards an FY27 override at special town meeting in November, so that we and every department in town knows what money is coming in when we're doing our budgets in the spring. Because making two budgets, making 10 budgets is incredibly difficult and it wastes a lot of resources. That's not the main reason. My main reason is what we're doing to our staff when we prolong this agony. Um, June 30th, we have a significant number of staff being laid off. We're going to pay out unemployment. They are going to, hopefully, and very likely, end up finding employment in other districts. And these are quality teachers we are losing. It hurts. And every time we do this, it damages morale at the school system, it stresses out our staff, we are not being good employers. It's very upsetting what we are doing to our staff. This is not good stewardship. And if we wait to act until the spring, next spring, for yet another, go through yet another budget season like this, that will be three years in a row that we have put the Lunenburg School District staff through this. That is not okay. And I am having a difficult time with the fact that the Select Board is not understanding what this is doing to our staff. I don't know how to make them understand. I, I, I don't. I don't know how to make them care. I'm very frustrated. Uh, and then to hear them last night disparage the school committee and our stewardship of what's happening. I need leadership and I need move, forward movement. Um, so, and this is me speaking, as a citizen, I am upset that we are not being given a vote on something that we voted at a town meeting. I feel like our voice is being taken away. I understand they have the legal ability and the right to not put it on the ballot if they feel it's not appropriate, but, uh, it's very frustrating to have sat through town meeting, voted, done the work, and then to be told, sorry, it only won by two votes, so that's not good enough, that doesn't count. But then to hear Mr. Jeffrey say that the town hall vote only failed by 5%, uh, he's, he phrased it as six votes, and so if it passes at the ballot, they'll try again at special town meeting. So, wins aren't really wins, losses aren't really losses, it's whatever the Select Board decides it is. And I know that's inflammatory, but I'm very frustrated about it.
It's not unfair. It's not unfair.
So, I would like us, I am going to be agitating, and I'm going to use that, I'm going to be agitating for an override at the special town, an FY27 override at November Special Town Meeting. If I have to do a citizens petition, not as the school committee, that's what I'll do because I can't speak for the school committee and I don't know what the school committee will be like. We have three new members coming in, so we, it's hard to strategize, but that's what I'm like to push for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the committee?
I did have one. I, I said I was going to make a statement, uh, before I left, and I am going to make a statement. Um, and I'm sure I'll be back in June as well, but I want to take a moment to personally thank Dr. Burnham for her outstanding leadership and dedicated service to the Lunenburg Public Schools. As she prepares for retirement this June, I am filled with admiration and gratitude for the impact she has made on our district. Dr. Burnham has led with clarity, care, and an unwavering focus on what's best for students. Her steady leadership helped navigate complex challenges, supported meaningful growth, and built a foundation that will serve Lunenburg well into the future. Whether guiding instructional improvements, prioritizing student well-being, or strengthening our community partnerships, her legacy is one of thoughtful, student-centered progress. I've appreciated Dr. Burnham's collaborative spirit and her ability to bring people together with a sense of purpose and professionalism. It's been an honor to work alongside her. Thank you, Dr. Burnham, for your years of service, your leadership, and the heart you've brought to Lunenburg. I wish you a joyful and fulfilling retirement. You certainly earned it.
Thank you very much. That means a lot.
Next up, uh, is the Chair's Report. Uh, upcoming this Friday is Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader at the High School? Uh, it's at 7:00 PM. Doors open at 6:30. A fundraiser for the club. You can come watch the, uh, school committee beat the Select Board.
Woo!
Will, um, are we planning on arriving at 6:30? Is that what the plan is?
Yeah, the doors open at 6:30, so, yeah. The Lunenburg Business Association is having their vendor fair on May 10th, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the TC Passios. It is a family-friendly event. The Classic Cruise Night is at the TC Passios, uh, May 21st from 4:00 to 8:00. That is a free event. They'll have music, food, games, prizes, and fun for all. And then I have some information about the, um, the state budget process. Um, with a vote of 140 to 14, the House passed the H4010, an Act Making Appropriations and for certain other activities and projects as part of a statewide priority for high-quality education, $353 million was allocated for educational-related investments. And as a direct result of the work of Project 211, uh, the following provisions were included: a full 100% reimbursement for FY25 regional school transportation, up from 80 to 82%; 75% reimbursement for FY25 out-of-district special education transportation costs through the Circuit Breaker program, increased from 44%; 75% reimbursement for FY26 OOD, special education transportation costs. Uh, Directive for the Office of Inspector General to review school transportation and provide recommendations by February 2nd, 2026, to reduce costs, enhance purchasing power, and streamline services. Um, some wins, um, there was 483.2 million for Circuit Breaker special education reimbursements, uh, and there were local earmarks secured, uh, 40,000 for security system upgrades in Lunenburg Public Schools. The budget also continues to fully fund universal free school meals, um, and invest 100 and 167 billion in early education care, if that makes sense. The House budget, uh, passed, including 150 per pupil minimum aid increase, 190 million additional funding for Circuit Breaker, 120,000 in direct earmarks for Lunenburg Public Schools. The Senate Ways and Means Committee has released the FY26 budget. On their side, unfortunately, does not include language to establish Chapter 70 Commission that we've been advocating for. So, we can continue to push to add this, uh, as an amendment and, and the support of the public as well is critical to our success. You can contact Senator Cronin, uh, and urge them, urge him to file a budget amendment incorporating the language of Senator Lewis's Senate Bill, S400, uh, which is proposing the commission to recommend changes, uh, to the funding formula. Uh, there will also be, uh, a hearing on May 9th, uh, at 2:00 PM to testify in person or virtually at the Joint Committee on Education's hearing on Senator Lewis's bill on May 12th. And you can also submit written testimony. The Senate will debate FY26 amendments the week of May 19th, 2025, which is after the hearing. And that is all I have. Next on the agenda is the Student Representatives Report.
Um, so, May 26th, there is no school for Memorial Day. Um, for the primary school, there's a first grade field trip. Um, I actually don't know what it is, but, uh, May 29th and June 12th is the primary school field day. Um, for both primary and Turkey Hill, there's a report card survey for parents. Um, for Turkey Hill, grade four MCAS was, um, May 6th and May 8th, which is tomorrow. Grade five MCAS is today, May 7th, and tom, um, Friday, May 9th. And their field day is June 11th. And I have a lot for the middle high school. Um, our spring athletics are in full swing. Uh, student, uh, student council elections were last week. Um, vote, votes, um, were announced on Friday. Uh, the middle school just had a glow dance on Friday. My friend's sister went, she had a lot of fun, so that was a success. Um, the sixth grade visits Museum of Science, and eighth grade just went on a DC trip over April break. That was also a success. Uh, seniors are wrapping up their year, participating in things like senior motorcade, senior breakfast, and graduation approaching fast. Um, May 16th is the last day to order the middle high school year, or the high school yearbooks. Um, the 2026 Greece trips for next April are filling up fast. Um, I don't know when that closes. Um, May 17th through May 30th, there is Honors and AP Art Thesis Show. Um, I have a piece in that, so, but that'll be fun to check it out if you have time. Um, National Honor Society is still offering peer tutoring on Tuesdays, and the Lunenburg Prom for juniors and seniors is coming up on May 17th. And that is all we have.
Thank you.
The art show?
Um, the art show is, may, do you ask when it was?
Yeah.
May 17th and May 30th to May 30th.
Where is it?
Um, I do not know off the top of my head. Uh, it's on the newsletters, um, but, yeah.
That's enough. I'll find it. At the library?
Yeah. It's, it's somewhere local.
Okay, great.
And I think the first graders are going to the zoo.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are you going to the zoo? Okay, they're going to the zoo.
Thanks for helping.
Thank you. We will continue with the agenda. Uh, we do not have any minutes to approve. Uh, next is the review and approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations. We had warrants from April 16th, 2025 to April 30th totaling $182,608.62.
Now invite Dr. Gilson to the microphone in case you have any questions. We're requesting to transfer... We're requesting to transfer funds from the elementary school guidance salary line due to resignation a little bit earlier, about a month ago, and partial savings from an unfilled position in the maintenance salary lines to allocate those to substitute lines that have been heavily hit. So we're looking to transfer from the guidance counselor salary line $16,063.77, and from the maintenance salaries, $7,136.41. And again, moving to the various lines, including the Turkey Hill Elementary Long-Term Substitute Line, the High School Special Ed Long-Term Substitute Line, and the High School Special Ed Substitute Line. If you have any questions, Dr. Gilson can respond.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No?
Okay, we have another line item transfer request. Requesting to transfer funds from the fire safety furniture repair line to the vehicle repair maintenance line to cover unanticipated need for the replacement of the flex plate for the 2012 Ford F-250 pickup. The transfer amount is $1,000. Any questions on that? We're starting to see the wear and tear on the 2012 vehicle. Another request to transfer funds from the general supplies line from the Turkey Hill and from the tech expenses to the contracted service line to cover the remainder of the year for Comcast billing. And we're in this situation due to E-rate. Those credits will be applied, but we need to remedy the bills right now. So, again, Dr. Gilson is here if you have any questions. But the total value is $12,332.80 going to contracted service, $6,370.1 coming from one general supply line, and $5,962.79 coming from the other. And lastly, to rectify salaries, we're looking to move $1,500 from the business manager salary line, $1,500 from the HR director salary line, and $53,493.40 from the salary reserve line up to the business office salary line and the assistant secretary salary line.
Is this connected to a hire?
This would have been connected to, in part, contracts for some of the individuals being resolved, so the salary reserve money is going to offset that. Additionally, Dr. Gilson took a salary lesser than what was budgeted for that position, so there's excess money in that line. But I'll let Dr. Gilson speak to it further.
Right, there were several, as you know, people in district office fulfill several functions, and so the people that are fulfilling several functions for their job, the salary increases will cover the data specialist, it'll cover the accounts payable person, it'll cover the, I forgot my glasses, to bring them up here to read, which is a little bit embarrassing, but there are many different functions, you know, like somebody said, "Liz, oh, thank you so much." That's what friends are for. So that you can read. But anyway, so the human resources specialist, the executive secretary, the registrar, the processing coordinator, the facilities revolving account coordinator, the accounts payable person, the district data specialist, and the school committee recording secretary. So those are enormous number of functions that all those people cover. And so, based on expenses that we have, that was warranted to address the debt in the line item. The appropriation was not enough to cover all of these functions, so that's what we did.
Thank you.
Does the FY26 budget account for the necessary changes?
Oh, it certainly does. Everything that needed to be in the FY26 budget has been put in there because I made sure it was.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Any other questions or comments?
I actually had one on the general supplies. Can you talk more about the contracted services? It's just to cover the E-rate.
Right, there's, okay, yeah, we, Mr. Ayala and I discussed this. It's the E-rate doesn't come into effect until a certain amount of where the year is up. There are credits that are applied thereafter, but that still doesn't rectify the negative in munis, the deficit. So we have to resolve this deficit, and it's like going to, you know, if you're trying to resolve a credit card bill, you have to wait for the refund to come into you in the mail, and then you have to bring it to your bank. So, which, this is an E-rate deficit that is reimbursable, it's coming back to us, but we have to resolve the deficit that's on record in munis, and you can't resolve that unless you resolve the deficit. So that's what we're doing.
And I think that this is a slight adjustment in how we're approaching things compared to past practice.
Okay. Does the credit come back to us before June 30th, or is this going to be a?
I can't guarantee that, you know, and I think too, like I was on the phone today talking to a company, a representative, that was supposed to return $3,000 in check form to us, and he said, I contacted, he contacted the place that was supposed to be sending us the check, his executive office. They still haven't sent the check, and so I talked to him today, and he's going to work on that. But I don't have any guarantees. They just have to be pushy and keep making the phone calls, which sometimes take a very long time.
Yeah, and I'll speak for myself. I have found E-rate to be enormously frustrating. And honestly, I'm not even sure it's worth it. It's a beast of a thing, and it's complicated, and we just need straightforward. Are we being reimbursed? When's the reimbursement coming?
It's going to come through.
It's frustrating, very frustrating. Thank you, Dr. Gilson.
So look for a motion.
Motion to approve the line item transfers, the four line item transfers.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
We have two, and you'll see that there's a new protocol here as well for town hall. I will be passing along paperwork for all of you to sign. We have one donation from the Board of Directors of the Madigan Family Foundation. They are going to continue the Richard Stackowitz Memorial Scholarship at Lunenburg High School, and we've received funding for the scholarship to be awarded to a graduating senior in the class of 2026 in the amount of $1,500.
That's great.
The second is in the amount of $35.50 from Box Tops for Education, and that check will be deposited into the gift account of the Turkey Hill Elementary School.
Any discussion?
No.
I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude both donations.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
I'll be very brief because we have a lengthy agenda and a lot of conversation ahead, I think. So I'll just make everyone aware of the upcoming dates. The next school committee meeting will be May 21st. It will be a hybrid meeting held from the middle high school. That will be the first meeting of the new school committee. That will be the reorg meeting. May 26th is Memorial Day. School offices and schools will be closed for the holiday, and June 4th will be the next meeting after the May 21st. That will be from here at town hall, also hybrid, and that will be the meeting where we honor our retirees, and this year, they're all from the high school. Karen Giuliani from the Art Department, Peggy Proctor from World Languages, and Bob Hill from the Science Department. So hopefully people will be able to come and join us just prior to that meeting for the retiree reception as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee members? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is Old Business Action Item, Superintendent Search, Deliberation, and Action. I'm going to call for discussion and look for a member to propose a motion as follows to move that we proceed to the discussion related to the superintendency and appointment of superintendent of schools.
I'll make a motion as described.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. So, I'm going to try to go nice and slow here and walk us through this, but we'll start with a discussion about the candidates. I will discuss the method of selection and election. I am declaring that the appointment of the superintendent will require three affirmative votes cast for that candidate. Discussion's going to proceed, which the school committee members will present their views of the candidates, and discussion proceeds under the direction of the chair. The chair will recognize each school committee member who seeks the floor, with preference given to those who have not spoken yet. Once all who wish to speak have done so, the chair will recognize those wishing to speak again. Generally, the public does not speak at these meetings, subject to the willingness of the chair and the school committee. The chair may recognize members of the public who request to speak. Citizens can speak only when recognized by the chair. Citizens address the chair and remain on point. Comments will be limited to a specific period of time, and the school committee will not The chair will, at a time in the future, I will call a roll call of each member and announce the name, and each member will announce the name of each candidate of his or her choice at the end of the ballot. I will announce the vote and ask if any members have vote, if all members have voted, or if any members wish to change his or her vote. I will then declare the ballot closed and announce the vote. If the candidate has received the required majority, the chair will declare the person elected. So, what I'd like to do is go down the line, and each person has their say. You can speak to the candidates and give, everybody else give that person their time.
Mr. Chair, just a question for clarification.
Yes.
And also in the interest of making this as efficient as possible, are you looking for a single preferred candidate from each of us, a top two, a rank order? Like, what do you think would be the right way of coming at this in terms of how we express our preferences?
I don't think you have to go through all four, but I think whether you go one, two, maybe three, but I think one or two should be enough, but if you want to go three, I think that's okay. Okay, I think as a committee, we'll start to get a direction, and then we can go around a second time.
Okay.
And I think, for me personally, I think it's important to, I want to hear from all of the members on what you saw, what information you saw, because I think we each see different things, and I think it's really important to share that, and I think it'll give us a full picture of what we want to see in a superintendent.
Oh, great. Can't wait till I'm not sitting.
You won't be the junior.
I know. I want to thank the search committee. They brought forth an impressive group of candidates. We are in the very fortunate position of choosing among great contenders, so I want to say thank you very much. This is not an easy choice, but it's also not a hard choice because there's no bad answers. All candidates are capable of serving Lunenburg well. I'm looking for someone who can continue Dr. Burnham's strong legacy in curriculum and achievement, fit well in the community, and there's a lot of other boxes. This is a very hard decision because there are so many stakeholders with so many different opinions and needs. So I am leaning towards Jody Fortuna. She was initially, I was initially very reticent about her, but she impressed me with how strong her interview was and her answers. She understands how to formulate data and present it and how to use it to make decisions. She has a very large variety of experiences to draw on. She has worn many hats in her career, and I think she'd be comfortable wearing those many hats to use that very, there's a reason we keep using it, it's because we keep using that phrase, and it's because that is what the superintendent has to do. And Dr. Burnham has had to pick up many hats that she was not supposed to be wearing, and we need someone who can continue that tradition. I think she balances the data analysis with an understanding of students as whole individuals. I was very impressed with the printed materials and the budget documents. I think she's a good fit for the town. She was excited to apply here. She purposely chose Lunenburg, and I think the town will be a good fit for her because this is a two-way street, this relationship. We're not just hiring someone, someone is choosing to work here. So I think Lunenburg will also be a good fit for her, which I think is very important, that we have someone who's going to stay here, stick around, and put down their roots and really get some work done. I think she's likely to adapt well to Lunenburg. I think she understands our needs. I was concerned about a candidate coming from such a large district. That was my main concern with her, but her interview assuaged those fears. I didn't express those fears, but she did address all the issues I had. She has experience being a superintendent in a smaller district. She learned a lot from that. And I like her leadership style. I think she checks a lot of the boxes of what Anthony and I heard from the teachers as far as hands-on learning and, you know, being out in the field. We heard that feedback a lot, which surprised me because I wouldn't think teachers would want, you know, their boss watching them work, but that is, we heard a lot of that feedback. So I think she brings a holistic view of student learning and success. That being said, I also did like Mr. Conway. I think he's a very strong, confident communicator who does a good job getting the message across. I believe he was the only candidate who didn't, we didn't get to all, ask all the questions for, because I keep hearing, you know, he kept his answers short, but I think he was the only one who didn't get, we didn't get to the last question. I think he's just such a good communicator that it felt like his answers were short, and that is a good thing. He was very engaged. He was very engaging, so he's, I'm also leaning towards him. But that being said, I think the other two candidates did have a lot of strengths, and it's more about choosing who's going to fill the needs of Lunenburg, and it's certainly not about winnowing out bad choices, so.
So I want to echo the thanks that Laura just made to the candidates, the screening committee. I also want to thank the staff and faculty for putting up with four long, difficult days and the planning that went into that, putting up with me working remotely last week. I appreciate everyone's patience in dealing with me. Certainly thank the public for their feedback. We did get some, some very good constructive feedback, and the questions that the committee generated, I thought were really good, too, and with the help of our rep from MASC to put them together. I was looking for, coming into this, a charismatic and persuasive leader. And my thinking on that was informed by the last three years of thinking that we were falling short, part of my C-plus, in not really selling the story that we need to sell to support the resources that we need to do our job. And that is no slight to the current superintendent or leadership. I just think it's an area where we, as a town, need to improve upon, we as a school district, need to improve upon. And I had expected that coming out of four interviews, that my vote would be for the most charismatic and persuasive candidate. I think that my vote is for the most persuasive candidate, but not necessarily the most charismatic. But in the totality of the interview, the data-supported responses, the clear understanding and the homework that was done about Lunenburg and the situation that we're in, the needs that we have, the community engagement that needs to happen, the direct engagement that needs to happen for the Lunenburg School Committee and school district to be successful, and the educational leadership that needs to continue. I was persuaded that Jody Fortuna is my number-one candidate, followed very closely by Joni Menard. And I became convinced over the course of those interviews that it doesn't necessarily require what I consider to be salesmanship and charisma to carry the day, to make an argument, to persuade people. There are different styles that can be brought to bear, and those styles are strongly reinforced by fantastic credibility and preparation and expertise. And in my opinion, both of those candidates distinguished themselves through their presentations to us, and I would be very comfortable with either of those candidates, but my preference at this point is Jody Fortuna.
Thank you.
My preference in looking at the candidates and where their strengths were and where I feel we need strength is Brent Conway. I think that he's a confident individual. I think that's extremely important in working with our community partners on other boards. His expertise in reading is an excellent match for our K-8 focus on academic excellence. In looking at his analysis for entry planning, his set priorities were budget stability. He has a plan to figure, somehow, he has a plan to figure this out. He also focused on MTSS and student services. He views special education students as general education kids first. He addressed the idea of special education kids very strongly. He talked about connecting systems, that you need a clear purpose and direction, a sense of efficacy that drives systems. It seems to me that he knows how schools work and what needs to be done to move work forward. We have done tremendous base work in this district. Dr. Burnham has done a wonderful job laying the foundation. I think he is the right person at this time to continue that particular work. He talked about multi-district partnerships, and he also talked as if like in another district they had something that we could help with, and they would help us with something, working together. He's done that in other districts. He also talked about his middle-high school scheduling strength. We have a need for middle-high school scheduling strength, and he has done that work. And the third point he had on his entry analysis was connection to community and traditions, a visible presence in the schools and in the community, which all of our candidates talked about, honoring the traditions and building trust by listening. He had clear ideas on how to work with our strengths and clear ideas for our area of growth. And I was very impressed with the robotics program he developed without costing his district anything with sponsors. Our kids would love to do that. So for those reasons, my first choice is Dr. Conway. My second choice was Jody Fortuna. I felt that she has great expertise, but I don't see the clear matchup with our needs. So that is why I, that's my opinion at this point.
Thank you.
Just one second, sorry.
We'll give you one second.
Okay, so to put the point up front, my first choice is Jody Fortuna. I think that, for me, she distinguished herself over and above the other candidates. However, I do have to say that I believe that Brent and Joni both did an excellent job. I was not expecting the presentations to be as good as they were, and I thought everybody did an excellent job. I have unfortunately had the opportunity, or whatever, to sit on tons and tons of hiring, especially recently, and I think that Jody's interview stood out not only among the candidates for this position, but pretty much every candidate I've ever seen. I went back and I was talking to my wife who had watched, and I said, "The last person I saw that did as good an interview was a person that I hired when I was working at the Public Defender in New Hampshire," and I realized that that was thirteen years ago. And since then, I've probably sat on five hundred other different hiring positions because I was on hiring committee at the Public Defender. She didn't just have a good interview, she came across as a really good person. So here are the things that I thought made her stand out. She has a pedigree in terms of her education and her degrees that I think is better than the other candidates. She has prior job experience as a superintendent. I also think that it's important that she's coming from Brookline. I think that Brookline is among, if not the best, it is one of the best public school districts in the state of Massachusetts. I also think that her comment that she would be a servant leader really matches what I, what I think the district needs. I think that having sat through five different listening sessions with Laura, it was clear that we needed, we need somebody who will say that they are a servant leader. And I, please don't take this as, I think this is one of your strengths, this is what you do. I also think that one of the things that drives me crazy is that you don't take credit for doing a great job. And so like, you know, being a servant leader is really important to me, and to see it come from you and have her use those words, that made me really, really like her. I think that she provided, among the most specific answers to questions, I will say that Brent and Tim had vaguer, more glib answers than Joni and Jody. Joni and Jody had very specific answers with very specific examples about important questions that we asked. It wasn't a slogan or a buzzword, it was, "I taught in Peter Sham, and I had students come to school on a horse." Right? Those kind of specifics tell me that they really think about things. The other thing that I appreciated about Jody, Joni, and Brent was when we asked them questions about a mistake they made, they all had real thoughtful answers about a mistake. Jody's mistake is something that I was aware of going into the interview, and I thought it would be interesting to hear her answer how she does that, and it just came across so well. She had a very good answer. You know, everybody makes mistakes. You judge people not by the mistakes they make, but the responses to those mistakes, and her answer was just, at that point in the interview, I felt like I was watching someone play Home Run Derby. Every single one was going out. I will also say that it was very impressive to me that she finished with nine minutes and fifty-two seconds left. No one came close to that. She did a really great job. The other thing is, she had the lowest number of wear-many hats, which I think is a notable phrase for people to use, but I think that it shows that people just want to go back to a cliche. "Don't tell me that, show me that," and she did that. I think that I also kept what I was thinking in my head of as the Lorax time. What's your Lorax time? How long does it take you to mention this is about the students, or this is for the students, or we speak for the students? Jody's time was the fastest at fourteen minutes. Brent tracked in at twenty-one minutes. Joni, it was forty-nine minutes, and I don't believe Tim ever mentioned that phrase. So if we're going by the Lorax metric, which I think is our touchstone for all we do, I think she did a really great job. I was impressed by her written materials, and I also think that, and I don't, I'm going to disagree with Peter a little bit, I think that charisma comes in many different forms. And you can be a person that is not Cicero and have charisma. And I think that having watched people like Carol, who I think have a lot of charisma, when Carol says things at town meeting, everybody listens. And they listen because Carol is calm, she has unquestionably high integrity, and she is thoughtful. And Jody, Jody displayed all three of those things in abundance. And so if you are asking, "Who is a person that will work for this town? Who is a person that can show leadership? And who is a person that has the skills, education, experience, and capacity to make big changes that are needed?" I think it's Jody Fortuna.
It's okay.
Thank you. I did want to go through some thank yous. I do want to thank Alicia from the MASC for all her work and the help and assistance in the process, and Liz Peterson, too, for all the help and assistance throughout the process, and also my fellow committee members, too, for all the help and work and deliberation too tonight. I also want to thank our screening committee, made up of diverse, of a diverse group of stakeholders from across the community who undertook a thorough and careful review of all the applicants. We received a strong pool of candidates, and through a structured and confidential process, the committee identified four finalists who possess deep experience at the district and central office level and who meet the qualifications necessary to lead our district forward. The finalists presented to the public were selected based on their qualifications, leadership experience, and readiness to serve in this critical role of superintendent. We appreciate the public's engagement, and our goal remains to select the best possible leader for our students, staff, and the entire Lunenburg school, Lunenburg committee, community. I want to acknowledge that this process of selecting superintendent is among the most important responsibilities entrusted to this committee. I want to thank all the stakeholders for giving us feedback as well. It was a frustrating process at times, but we are almost there. So I am going to start, I want to thank all of the highly qualified candidates. I think all four could do the job July one and start running. The, I want to start with my second pick. I found as I was gathering all the information about the candidates, I found that two kept, my, my comments were just longer with these two. So my second one was Joni Menard. She had a diverse experience with, which, including business, she had worked overseas, working with the language barrier, she was a professor, she had a lot of experience with small towns, a union rep, a lot of experience with labor meetings, which I know a lot of them do. She had the sales and marketing experience, the doctorate from the University of Hartford. She has that small-school passion, which I think is great because Lunenburg needs someone who wants to be in a small school, not worried about leaving, and I think she really wants the right fit. I liked how she was an ed policy chair. She's worked with grants, talked about grants, talked about the ninety-nine munis lines and budgeting. She did look at her notes, which I thought was great, too, because she, she wants to make sure she hit all the points. She mentioned about the off-site, going to see stakeholders, the roundtables. I liked how she addressed her literacy weakness and got the training. She meant, she mentioned the artwork in Lunenburg. I thought that was, again, a great connection to referencing the Lunenburg-specific information. She mentioned the Department of Education training. I loved how she was in full support of the SRO. She mentioned that, and even advocating at a town meeting for a comfort dog. She talked about developing protocols with the principal. She referenced the power school that we use. She referenced the innovation pathways. I liked her idea that offering every other year courses, she really brings that small-town feel of trying to get creative with scheduling. I liked how she recruited agencies and translators and businesses, the PTO, the police, resources. She gave us the great example of the racial bias example, the pep rally support, the PD tracks for paras, and she recognized people, and she wanted to recognize people. She always wanted to give a heads-up to the school committee, and she wanted to make sure Liz was a critical friend in decisions, and I think that was really important, too. And she finished with people needing to see her and trust her. My number-one, though, I think stood out a little above Joni, was Jody Fortuna. She was community and people-driven. She has that small-town feel. She listens. She's engaged, engaging and thoughtful. She wanted to survey students and didn't connect it to testing. It was like, not testing, but surveying students to get their feedback, honest and values. I thought the DCF story was, it has its pros and cons, but I thought it's, it's that caringness of, of who you want, and it just told the story of the caring person that she is. She talked about the community needs and values to stand up to. I felt she gave a good story, too, of just standing up for her team and standing up to the BS, and I know she will. I thought she was very smart and very well-researched. This came up that she talked to the primary school custodian, and she mentioned Jose, and that she wasn't sure about the name, and I looked it up, and the head custodian is Jose Marcialayende. And I was like, yes, that's, that was huge for me. I thought that was, she's, she's a people person. She even mentioned her custodian in her story. She did mention budgeting and projecting three years out, which I think, again, is important with budgeting. She, she's a mentor for a Harvard student, again, with, again, just, I think it's just that, the all-encompassing picture. The referencing, referencing Liz by name in the interview, I thought was another connection that she's remembering names, she knows the people, she's talking to people. I really appreciated the response there. The Ivy example, I appreciated that. The student climate survey, the fact that, the story of how her former students called her mom. The, the SRO comfort dog question, I felt like she nailed it more than any of the others, too. She talked about the example of the loss of a staff member bringing in six comfort dogs, and I thought she just killed that question. Making a safe place for staff and administration and students. Meeting with finance quarterly, I thought that was important for Lunenburg. I think that's an important thing to continue. And then the, obviously, the Fox Twenty-Five and Boston Globe example, and standing by our staff. The, seeing the paras, noticing that our paras are engaged, and again, connecting to our staff, mentioning our system print- And again, connecting to our staff, mentioning our assistant principal, who is also the track coach, and referencing the multiple hats. So for me, it was, number one was Jody Fortuna.
Mr. Chair, can I say one thing quickly?
So we are going to go around the second time, so if you're ready and you want to go?
This is very quick, this will be my only comment. The other thing that I forgot, and it was on my list, Dr. Fortuna showed an amazing attention to detail, and I noticed it as she was talking. Her dress was blue and white. Her fingernails were blue. Her shoes were blue, and her purse was blue. That is how you tell somebody that you want to be part of that school district. And it's not that it matters what somebody looks like, or what they're just, but the fact that she went through and systematically created an outfit that happened to be our school's color, that was clearly intentional. And in fact, I know it was intentional because somebody at one of the staff things asked her, and when I brought it up, they said, no, I asked her, it was on purpose. That is forethought, and that is like, and this is kind of like a hokey example, but that is like three-dimensional chess, right, or four-dimensional chess. She had thought out every single thing. What she said, how she presented, what she looked like, she did a great job. I really did feel like I was watching somebody play Home Run Derby. She just crushed it.
Other discussion from the members?
I have to bring this up. As I said, she was my second choice. She's still my second choice. But we asked people for their opinions, and she scored the lowest. And I just want to state that and say that it causes me a little bit of stop if, and it's a small sample, obviously, I, you know. But it does cause me a little bit of stop when you ask people for opinions and they give them to you, and then you don't go any further. And I did talk to a staff member who felt that her communication with children was lacking in the visit. So I will just say that, because I feel that I need to. But otherwise, I would agree that her interviews went very well, and that I think she would do a good job learning, leading our district, but that is why I had her as two instead of one.
So just for clarification, I think she scored third out of the four.
Oh, it was, yeah, okay, you're probably right.
And again, the respondents, just for the public, we had 54 respondents was the maximum. We had some that were only 35 respondents, 39 respondents, and 27 respondents for the
First of all, I want to acknowledge Tony's comment. You're absolutely right. And I think probably a better way for me to phrase it was my gut expectation from a charismatic persuasive leader. But again, that's my gut, not necessarily everyone's gut, nor what gets demonstrated over four interviews. And I think that that is really what led to my persuasive comment relative to her interview. And I think we violently agree on that point. With respect to the feedback, first of all, I appreciate the feedback. I think were we to do this again, there were some weaknesses in our approach, such that the survey was anonymized-ish, there was no way to ensure that the respondents were in fact in Lunenburg or had any stake holdership in our community. I suspect that there may have been some outside influence on at least one of the candidates.
I would agree.
Not to discount the value of the feedback, that's on us really, having not, and our consultants, having not really thought that through in advance. I called around today. I called the superintendent first thing this morning. I called a number of parents that I regularly talk to throughout the day when I had some time. And I can tell you that the reaction that I got was completely mixed, and is representative of preferences for three of the four candidates, as well as what was reflected in email that we received today, direct email, as well as public comment that we received today. So, and what I think that that is representative of is a strong field of candidates. I truly believe what was stated earlier. All four candidates could show up on June 1 and do the job and potentially successfully lead Lunenburg. Where my head is at, as still a member of this committee and wanting to do the right, do the best job I can possibly can on what is probably the most important vote of my three-year tenure on the school committee, is to do something that I am convinced is the right decision for Lunenburg. And I remain persuaded that it is Jody Fortuna.
Any other discussion? Mr. Przykowski?
I'm still, the survey results, I'm not putting a lot of stock in because of the skewed numbers, as far as some of them, we got a lot more responses on, and keeping in mind that the survey was public, it was on our Facebook. And the details, just so the public knows, we got very sparse details. If you wrote a specific comment, we did not get that, which I am not thrilled with. And I agree with Peter about the feedback is not, that I've gotten in person is not quite reflected in that, and I am still for Jody Fortuna.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to call the roll of each member, and you will announce the name of the candidate of your choice at the end of the ballot. I will announce the vote and ask if members have voted, or if any member wishes to change his or her vote, and then I will declare the ballot closed and announce the vote. Ms. Przykowski?
Jody Fortuna.
Mr. Beardmore?
Jody Fortuna.
Ms. Archibald?
Brent Conway.
Mr. Skolambry?
Jody Fortuna.
And Jody Fortuna for myself. I'm going to ask if all members have voted. All right, I'm going to ask if any member wishes to change his or her vote. All right, the ballot is closed, and I will announce the vote, four for Jody Fortuna and one for Brent Conway. I will look for a motion as follows. Move that Jody Fortuna be appointed superintendent of schools for Lunenburg, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate and the school committee and signed by both parties or their designees.
I will make a motion as stated.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, so at this time, I believe I'm going to call Jody.
Oh, wow.
Like live on?
Like live in the meeting.
What?
I know, it's my first time doing it.
Live on Saturday night.
It's like NFL Draft Day.
Or like when they call to tell people they're Hall of Fame?
Yeah.
From the Baseball Writers Association. Oh, wait, no, Lunenburg School Committee.
This is really strange. Maybe she's watching.
Hello?
Hi, Jody?
Yes.
Hi, this is Brian Leighton, the school committee chair of Lunenburg.
Hi, Brian.
How you doing?
How are you?
Good, hi. So I'm at the school committee meeting right now, and there has been a motion and a second, and we have approved and appointed Jody Fortuna as superintendent of schools for Lunenburg, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate and the school committee and signed by both parties or their designees. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm so thrilled and honored to be able to work with the community. Thank you.
Do you accept the position?
I absolutely accept the position.
Thank you. All right, I'll be in touch, Jody. Thank you. Have a good night. Bye. All right, she has accepted the position.
All right.
Do we need to do something with smoke now?
Oh, that was going to be my comment.
No smoke, no smoke.
Not in this building.
We could probably arrange.
Or maybe in this building.
Alicia, thank you again. Is there anything else I need to do before I go to the next agenda item?
Nope, you're good, and I gave you instructions for what happens later on.
Yes.
If there isn't anything else, let me know. We're always happy to help to do workshops after, like, endsip and all that stuff, so.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Alicia.
Have a good night.
Take care. Night. All right, next item on the agenda, more exciting stuff, override ballot impact.
All right, I was so happy. Now we're going back.
So I'm going to just ask, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I don't know what happened at, like, did they vote? It wasn't clear to me if they had voted, like, at some point they kind of.
The select board?
Yeah.
They did not vote. They just had a stroll.
But they like, they all said what was going to happen, but they didn't vote.
They didn't vote to put it on the ballot or.
There was not a vote.
They didn't have the vote. They didn't bother taking a vote.
So can, I guess my next question is then, where are we procedurally? Could they say, all right, we're actually going to take a vote?
Yes, they could in the future.
Oh, my God.
And that's what Peter kind of references, that maybe the pressure will get to them and they might actually put a vote in the future.
When the committee turns, maybe the votes will be there.
So I had referenced this, I believe, from what I had heard from the lawyer, the town lawyers, that it's a two-thirds vote. So out of the five members, they need four out of five, or three out of four, to actually get it on the ballot. So it's even more difficult knowing.
I didn't know that.
The voices so far last night.
It's not a matter of waiting for one vote.
You need to sway.
It would be two.
You have to sway a no.
And there's currently two noes who are remaining on the board.
So that makes it fairly unlikely.
Very difficult.
Poor TJ.
I didn't realize that. I thought it was a majority vote.
I didn't know that either.
Yeah, and again, this is what I had heard.
No, that is.
It's actual, but it sounds right.
Yes, I asked the same question.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it wasn't a two-thirds vote at town meeting?
No.
It's not. It's the select board, two-thirds vote.
It's specific to a decision to call the special election.
But the debt exclusions are two-thirds votes. The overrides are not.
Different.
No, I know, it's just.
Yeah, challenging.
Yes.
Any other discussion on the override ballot impact?
No. I just wanted to offer that the timing does matter on this, and I think that that was the point that Mrs. Przykowski was trying to make at town meeting. If this were to go forward in November, and if it were to pass, it's highly unlikely that we're restoring some of the teaching positions that we cut at that point, particularly at the high school, because to return those positions means you need to reschedule the high school, the whole high school. And that's not practical. So I think, you know, just for the benefit of the public and the committee, to understand that once the year gets underway, there are some things that are difficult to reinstate. You know, we can hire back secretaries at any point in the year, we can hire paraprofessionals and add that support on at any point in the year. But particularly challenging at the high school level to restore core classes by restoring teachers after we've, you know, gotten through a quarter of the school year, it would be very difficult.
What's the pool of applicants look like by the time you get to November? I mean, my understanding is that like.
It becomes more challenging.
So it's not just that we would have like a scheduling problem, we might not be able to find those people. And so then the money would essentially be, it's not wasted, but it would not be, we would not be capable of going back to level services budget, even if we had the money, we just wouldn't have the personnel. So are you saying like, in order to make the override work at all, it's basically now or never?
I think it's just a point of information. If the intent was to try to restore the level service, timing matters, because we will have staff that may not find employment by July 1. We have some. We have some that were notified that they are the reduction in force, and they have already gone out and secured jobs. But there are others who will not by July 1, and they will start to collect unemployment. And the ones who have accepted other jobs, even if the position is restored, they won't be returning, and then we have to attempt to find someone else to fill the position. So the timing does have some impact, and I just wanted to put that out there for the benefit of the community to understand why, even if an override were to be on a ballot and pass in November, there are some significant logistical challenges and things that may not be in the best interest of all students. Having to reschedule the high school is not necessarily in the best interest of all the high school students.
And the high school is being scheduled now, correct?
Yes.
Based on the staffing levels.
Yes.
We are anticipating for the next fiscal year. This is.
Right. I mean, if we hired back a science teacher, you have to have classes that the science teacher is teaching, and there have to be students in those classes, so you would have to pull students from other classes to assign them there. At that point in the year, it's not in the best interest of students to make that move. Your next superintendent may see things differently, but it would be a significant impact at the high school to be restoring position, teaching positions after the school year is underway. This is very frustrating.
I mean, how many times have I said over the last three months, this is a messy, this is a messy process, you know? It is what it is, and it's not great. We did kind of make this bed.
We did.
A point that's been made several times by many people outside this committee over the course of the last several months, it is what it is. I'm glad that we got the extra $500,000. We received news tonight that there is cause for optimism for several hundred thousand dollars more from the state. Once again, the timing is not ideal, and none of it's guaranteed, it's all subject to conference committees and horse trading that goes on in Boston. But I, you know, I think the best advice, and it's really not for me to give as a lame duck member of this committee at this point, but the best advice to the administration is go with what we got until we got something else. And that's what we have to do.
Yep.
I would agree.
And I want to be clear, we would take the money happily. This is not us saying we don't want it. We will find ways to use it, very responsible ways. They just would not look like the level service budget if the money doesn't come through in a timely manner. But it would certainly help, so this is not us saying, don't give us the money. However, it's going to be very difficult unless the select board acts immediately. And as I pointed out in my public comment, they don't just have to meet on Tuesdays, they can do special meetings. We've done it.
More than.
And I think to the point of how we would use the money, I think honestly, there's still some level of uncertainty as to the impact on material purchases, with some continued lack of clarity around tariffs and how that will impact our budget, really. So there's still that level of concern as well.
Any other discussion on the override ballot impact? I don't see any action at this time. I don't see any action at this time. All right, next item on the agenda is the student activities fee restructure. Action item.
So I'll ask Dr. Gilson to come to the microphone.
So, as you know, we've been reviewing the student activity fee with multiple committees and listening to feedback. After listening to feedback and discussing two options, the two options that we discussed were one fee for all students, the 55 fee, $55 fee is no longer supporting the level of activities that we're providing, so the recommendation would be to move that fee to $70. The other fee, the other part that we considered was splitting the fee into two different levels to recognize differences in student participation. That would have involved splitting and creating a universal base fee of $60, and going with $80 for students that participate in all the other activities. So, I'm gonna just simply say, after listening to feedback, we're gonna recommend the move from $55 to $70 for all students. Keep it, keep it simple. And that would be with a recommendation that I think is sustainable, and will meet the needs of everyone across the next superintendency, and the other opportunities that students have to get involved in activities, I think it would be sustainable.
What questions or comments the committee members have?
Could I just offer a comment here?
Yes.
So, this was discussed at some length a couple of weeks ago at a high school advisory committee meeting that was facilitated by Dr. Gilson and Mr. Santri and his staff, and a couple parent representatives and myself as part of this discussion, and we kind of went all the way around the horn on it, and talked about, you know, the, the need to make this a manageable number, and our discomfort with increasing a fee that is already an uncomfortable fee, and the, the potential benefit of applying an expanded number to the kids who would use things like, you know, language clubs, or those kinds of things. When it came down to it, though, the, the consensus of the, of the people in the room was that the administrative overhead was probably cost prohibitive in and of itself. But in addition to that, the we want our kids to participate in these extracurriculars. And to disincentivize them by asking the families to reach into their pockets for something even as nominal as, you know, I think the number was-
Twenty dollars?
Was an additional, but the, the additional fee if we had gone to the, the split.
Is twenty dollars?
But total, if they were participating in the universal activities and the other activities-
Would have split it to-
Oh, it's both?
It would be a both, so it'd-
I didn't realize that.
Hundred and forty dollars.
Right, so it would have gone, it would have, it would have more than doubled the out-of-pocket expense to the family. I apologize, I didn't have the numbers.
That's okay.
And, and the, the general consensus was, we, we the extra $15 per student was not worth the-
The management for, if, we had a buffet menu for all of the other activities, and you know, if students wanted to participate in all the music activities, or, you know, the student interests, other student interest activities, the management was cost prohibitive in the end.
Yeah. And I, the other thing I wanted to say is, even though we're not, we did not recommend this, I do think that it was worth the effort of going through the process of figuring out alternatives, to make sure that this is a well-vetted program. Because having done this for a number of years, and this keeps coming up, but had not necessarily been vetted at all over the course of the last several years, or re-vetted, it needed to happen. And I'm glad that we took the time to look at alternatives, really validate that these funds are needed, that they do service the students in a way that is beneficial to all. I, you know, it, it's the least bad option once again, but, but I, I think that we, we also have a responsibility to to make sure that these revolving accounts are, are sustainable. And this will, this increase of $15 per year will, will do that.
Ms. Harschenbaum?
I just, out of curiosity, did you get people coming to the Zoom meeting?
They were very low-attended.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. It still bothers me that you pay $240 for graduation. Some kids, that's all they do. It is still very troublesome to me to have that fee, but you have to cover the bills, you know, so I, we haven't come up with a good way around it yet. I'll stay up at night thinking about that.
And so will I. Okay.
Any other discussion? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve option one, the flat fee of $70 as the student activity fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Turkey Hill ADA study final report.
So the committee does have a final report?
So I want to thank the architects, because they did a, a huge, undertook a huge project, they did an overwhelming job. Kaya Sevasta from CSS Architects. What I thought to complimented the work, I spent a, a number of hours talking to the MSBA, because as I listened to your feedback, it seemed that what you were looking to get was like a, an overall executive summary, like where now? And so, essentially, the architect provided me with cost-per-square footage. I took a look at the, the actual footage of Turkey Hill, I looked at what we would need to go through the MSBA phase for new construction. I looked at what it would be for a more expensive MEP renovation, and I looked at a baseline renovation fee based on the cost-per-square footage. So if you, I've stepped through, I provided with the documentation in the folder, there are specific links that compare projects that were completed this year for new construction, and specifically focused on designer and OPM costs for similar elementary schools. That is a link in your, in, in the, in the file that, that is there for the facilities and grounds report.
Oh.
It's not in the, so if you look on the facilities in grounds report, that is the, that is a supplementary document that I, that I created based on what I thought you might need in terms of what to do next. So, looking at reimbursable rates, the reimbursable rate you can only get from MSBA if you are working for Lunenburg, so they did not relay it to CSA, CSS Architects. The rate right now, per this year, is 57%. What I wanted to do was compare it with what the rate was when we built the high school, and that was 59%. So despite all of our changes, the rate has remained stable for reimbursement. You can look at their added incentives that they give for the reimbursements, and like, we did get some when we did the high school. There made, there were points that we got for, you know, green efficiency, overlay zoning and maintenance. So, I think moving forward, if you are pursuing new construction, invitation through building completion is about five to seven years total, plus another two years for the commission of a new, of the new building through the final receipt of the MSBA payment, so the total span is like nine years. Okay? So, renovation is a lot, I want to say it's a lot quicker, it's not gonna take like a full nine years to, to get there. And, so I think you can use the key links that I provided in this facilities and grounds report that will take you directly to those areas that you need to really think about if you're gonna pursue new, new construction. The other cautionary note that I've been given, if you look at the cost-per-square footage when we built the middle high school, and you look at the cost-per-square footage now, the original cost-per-square footage when we built the high school was $340. And the cost-per-square footage of new construction, and this is just for the elementary school comparisons, are $750 to $1,000. So the cost-per-square footage are gonna raise significantly over the time that you, you know, you, you run with the project. So, that is a consideration, the cost ranges that I've given are, are there on, you know, in, in different ways, you need to look at for total new construction, you need to look at the construction costs for the designer and the OPM, plus the cost of the actual construction. So, things to think about. And maybe there's opportunity to get going.
Mr. Scullbrini?
Is there any way that we could also use funds if the town were to pass the Community Preservation Act? So if we could use MSBA funds and get reimbursement through CPA, we could reduce the cost to the town significantly. Is there a way? Like, who would we ask to get that answer? Would the architects know?
I think it might be the Lunenburg-
The town.
Yeah, I would ask Lunenburg. I want to say the architectural preservation maybe, but it's, I believe Turkey Hill- I believe, no, I believe Turkey Hill does not qualify, that's, that's my concern.
It's not old enough?
I don't think it's old enough, but I know someone who you could ask.
I, I do too, that's why I said he was under-
But I'm pretty sure I've heard that from-
Okay, I'll ask.
The person you're gonna ask, I'm pretty sure Turkey Hill doesn't qualify, but you can't quote me on it, quote him on it.
But he might know who to ask.
Ms. Przowski?
Even if it's not him.
I want to say thank you, Dr. Gilson, for compiling this information. This makes it easy to contextualize what's in the report. You figured out what we wanted, and this, this was very useful information. Yeah, I think we need to do some very long-term planning, as in, I was just trying to calculate how old the primary will be in 30 years.
And then I think you also need to consider whether you keep it, if you, if you do new construction, do you want to construct a 3, 4, 5 building? Or do you want to just recreate a K5 new construction school? Because by that time, the primary school will have also aged. And, so, there's a lot to consider for the next committee, and the people that are remaining on the next committee, and the next superintendent.
Other questions or comments from the committee members?
I'd also like to thank Dr. Gilson for all the work she's done on this project. This is huge, and, and it finally is the answer of how much will it cost to renovate, how much will it cost to rebuild? And obviously, nobody can predict construction cost increase in this crazy environment. But to have it so that at this point in time, this snapshot, we have an understanding of what the ratio is to a renovate to a new build. You know, the numbers are gonna change, but we know, you know, the renovate is much less expensive. Of course, we'd have to look at in renovation, or you'd have to look at, in renovation, how to change that so that that building is more applicable to young kids. And, you know, that's another piece that wasn't figured in on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Another piece for me is also the, where the students go if we do choose renovation, and how much that is gonna cost if we rent a school building from another-
They, they were saying you can work around it, I can't imagine-
For a higher price, that's the hint, right, you're gonna pay for it, so that would be interesting too.
I also think that's ideal for the-
No, I don't think it's good for anybody, but-
Being lost out of town better than working around construction for two years.
And the other thought I had too was, I think the, the school committee should consider a presentation, either in the fall town meeting or a spring town meeting, presenting the two cases to the voters who are always at the fall and spring town meeting, to get direction also on what the voters want as well. I think getting their feedback, I think will be important in the process, so that you can continue to make progress.
So, I echo the, the appreciation for doing this, this is, these are, we took ambiguous information that we all kind of had, and turned it into a document that is a much more reliable piece of information than, than any of us previously had. And, and I, I think that that's an important stack, step, to start to, to begin a narrative with the town, as you, as you outlined. This is going to be a heavy lift for the next school committee, or a future school committee, to figure out, given the fiscal situation that we have in town, all of the other potentially competing projects, it's gonna be a heavy lift. And it should be planned for accordingly. One of the things, though, that I think we need to make that narrative really clear around is there needs to be a placeholder in our debt planning for the town of Lunenburg. Because the activity that we got ourselves involved in as a town over the course of the last couple of years with both Marshall Park and municipal building projects, did not account for space for three projects within the available debt capacity that we currently-
So I have, I have had conversations with the finance committee chair, and he has done the the research, it doesn't have these numbers, but it has numbers of projections of what it would potentially cost for renovation and a new build, and he's crunched the numbers of he had it ready for the, the fall town meeting, and it didn't come up that he needed to present it, but I think he has the numbers and he's ready at some point to-
There is room-
Have those discussions and presentations.
There is room in the debt capacity, I think, yeah, because he had asked about it, and yeah. The finance committee chair has, has done that, there is room, because that was one of the concerns.
I appreciate that the work's been done, and I appreciate you telling me that Chris Menard told you that there's room. The evidence that I've seen is not, does not align with that. So, at some point, somebody needs to throw the numbers out on a spreadsheet and, and present them.
Mr. Scullbrini?
As one of the two remaining members that will be at the next school committee, I have a question to all the people that are leaving. So, when this process came up, my dad, who knows a lot about buildings, and he is currently, I texted him, he's currently researching the CPA question. He said to me, over pizza, this will cost you between $300 and $350 a square foot to renovate that building. That is exactly what those people said. So I think that that number must be pretty stable, but how do you guys think we should do this? Should it be something where the school committee, like, one person from school committee, one person from finance, one person from select board, get together and start talking about both how this gets funded and what the process looks like? Should there be something else? Because if the numbers are that stable, and my dad, like, all kidding aside, he really does know old buildings, he's renovated, you know, he renovated the second-largest Air Force Base in the United States. He renovated the Wright Brothers Cycle Shop and kept it up to historical standard code, given it was such a significant building. He renovated a whole neighborhood around the Wright Brothers Cycle Shop. I think those numbers are right, but I want to make sure that we have like a way of getting it going, or keeping the flame alive. Because what I've seen in the five years that I've lived in Lunenburg is that we have an addiction to building new buildings, but not an addiction to funding them or getting rid of their old counterparts. So like, what do you guys think would work best?
So my recommendation would be to go to either fall or spring town meeting.
Okay.
Have either one person or two people present the, the renovation idea, like, I could see Senior Anthony Scullbrini-
Oh my gosh, we could do that.
Presenting the renovation idea, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what we can do. And then maybe a Mr. Beardmore presenting the, this is what the new build is gonna be, this is gonna be what the cost is gonna be. And get a non-binding vote of the people who are actually going to town meeting and voting, because that's a big part of it, we need to get the vote and the direction of the community, and a lot of it is the people who show up at town meeting. And then you would go from there.
I have a-
He volunteered for a word.
It was slightly different, I appreciate that I've just been volunteering. I appreciate that I've just been volunteering.
You just created a building committee.
But I, I have a slightly different point of view on this, which is, first of all, I think that the school committee needs to have an opinion around where this sits in the panacea of priorities.
Okay.
And what an ideal scenario or a preferred scenario would be to include a plan for the disruption, right? Is this a multi-phase plan? Is this a one-stop shop? And there's a cost of renting an abandoned building someplace or, you know, putting, you know, using space in the unused warehouse out on Lemons from Shirley Road or something? I don't know what, right? Trailers, whatever it is. I think that that illustration needs to be made before we go to the town and say, is it a, is it a, you know, an improve or replace scenario? I also think that your instinct around trying to build some consensus amongst the select board and the finance committee before that happens is a good thing as well. Now, all of that being said, we have a history recently of a plan of record that kind of followed that path, but there was nobody in the room who was actually looking at the total cost and what the voter was willing to bear when that occurred. So that was, in my opinion, the critical failure of that process a few years ago. And I'm probably overstating it, but not that much. So I think all of this needs to be kind of strategized, but clearly, the new school committee and the new select board, this is good fodder for conversation when these joint meetings start to occur that we talked about a few weeks ago. Like, this is a really good agenda item to kind of start building that, how do we do this, conversation.
What would you do?
I agree with Peter. My first thing, first thing is, they always look at you and say, "We're waiting for the school committee to decide what they want to do." So I think the school committee has to decide, not the school committee, has to decide on what they want to do. And then, I think you need to work with the other boards to figure out how this is all going to fit in. This is not going to be done quickly. I would look at Spring Town Meeting because I would want to see what happens in the Fall with the municipal buildings and the, and Marshall Park. Because if those fail again...
No chance.
Then, then I know, I think that the fodder is for you.
Oh, okay.
Because in this, in this community, as much as it makes Mr. Jeffries very concerned, I should say, the former chair of this, I don't know, not polite to say, Mr. Jeffries, but as much as he gets concerned that this town traditionally only votes for schools, this town traditionally only votes for schools. The public service building, it took forever, but they did vote for it. And the library, but boy, that was pulling teeth, too. So usually, it is easier to get a school done than the other buildings. That being said, I am the first person saying, "This has to be fixed." I am the first one to say, "Wait till the municipal building plan is set." I've been saying that to Mr. Jeffries for four years. But if that fails the town meeting in the Fall, when is it going to be set? Are they going to go back to the drawing board? If that is the case, you need to go first. That's my opinion, but...
And also, I mean, we do have a responsibility to the kids and the parents. We have been talking about this for the six years that I've been involved here. And Carol has said probably 100 times...
At least.
"We'll wait our turn, but you need to move the ball forward." And right now, it's very clear that the ball is kind of...
It's starting to stall.
It's going to be our ball. And if this doesn't go through again, it's our ball. We're going to have to pick it up and run with it, because I think that our...
And I hope it goes through. I want these buildings renovated.
We'll see you on the building.
We need our new school offices. We need, PAC needs a home. I mean, all of these things are very, very important. But if the town can't manage to vote on it, then the debt capacity is there, just sitting there.
Doing nothing.
Scoop it up.
And that's, that's a waste.
Town's not retiring.
When we have debt capacity that we're not using or utilizing, we're losing out.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I disagree on that. The debt that we're not paying on today is tax dollars that we're not paying today, right? Like, and when we talk about the public's capacity to fund operations versus, versus capital, versus building projects, it's all coming out of the same wallet, right? At the end of the day. And now, there is a, there is a savings, there's an incentive to use state money to pay for a significant portion of a school building, but when we're talking about our debt capacity, any debt that we take, we have to service that debt. And, and that is, you know, that exact, those exact same dollars are on the minds of the voter when they're looking at an operational override or a debt exclusion. It's the same dollars coming out of the same wallet, and we have to be mindful of that.
We also, deferring maintenance is costing us money. Look at what happened at the old primary school. Look at what's happening at TCP. We no longer can have our district offices in there. So there is a cost to deferring decisions.
Any other discussion on the Turkey Hill?
No.
I just want to say that while you go through this and you want to talk about funding, I told you I was on your speed dial. I am not on the speed dial for funding.
Call Carol.
I would like to see the report posted on the website, and also, can we send this to Finance Committee Chair as well?
And to the town manager, too.
Yes.
Oh, can I also note that this number, I would like to add to it, because I don't love spending town money. This is to get the building, the MEP, the exterior, and the bones of it up to snuff. This is not to make Turkey Hill, it's not for new paint inside, it's not for new floors, it's not to take out the lockers and put something that my daughter, when she was in third grade, couldn't reach the top of the locker, because it's a middle school being used by elementary school students. So I would like to add, and I don't know how much, I said a million or two, but I don't know how much flooring costs, because my brain cannot take what a house kitchen floor costs and put that in a school. But if we're going to give the tax, if we're going to have the taxpayers raise their taxes for a new school, I would like it to also feel nice inside and do some of the cosmetic upgrades as well. And we're going to need to find a place for district offices if a town hall doesn't open. So this, this number does not include, my brain wants pretification, beautification, bringing it up to more modern standards.
So I think similar to the Lunenburg municipal building design, that would come at a later stage, that you would get a more accurate number with what you wanted in more details.
Oh, yeah. But I just, I wanted to say that this is for the roof, the windows and everything, and it would be disappointing to the public. I know it would be disappointing to me if my taxes go up and then the building looks exactly the same, just with less leaky roof and less terrifying windows.
So one scenario, and again, I think this will come up when you get to a joint committee discussion. If you recall, when we started this conversation a year, year and a half ago with Mr. Jeffries, he came at this from the point of view of, "You should shore up the building such that it, the envelope and the building are to code, but could be potentially reutilized in a period of time as a town hall or community building or what have you." And, and I still agree with his, with his conclusion that it would lend itself to that sort of transition at some point. The problem when we start talking about MSBA reimbursement is that option is out the window.
Yeah.
So that $16 million, or whatever we spend, is actually $16 million in debt service. It's not eight, or seven, or five. It's, it's the full toll if we're planning to reutilize that building in a period of time for something else. If, if we're, if we're doing an MSBA project, it's a school until all of us are in the ground.
So based on that, does that change your mind about what you would do with the building?
This is principally why I don't believe the $16 million number. Like, I think it's substantially more than that. Because as soon as we, first of all, everybody's taking the $16 million number and discounting it by, you know, .43 or whatever the reimbursement rate is, right? I think that it is probably, if we are going to do this in a way that makes long-term sense and, and you can actually harmonize the future of the primary school and all that sort of thing, we probably need to have a conversation about this being a non-MSBA project. But you still have to check the ADA checkbox, which means it's, it's an expensive project no matter what you do, right?
That was not an answer to my question.
So, so my answer is, I am still very skeptical of a, of a rehabilitation project in this building.
Without a, okay, so suppose that you had to pick, and it's a rehabilitation project with an eye towards town use or an eye towards maintaining it as a school. What do you do? There is no town or down option.
I think right now, it would be to maintain it as a school. But to be honest with you, my mindset is, let's look at a renovation expansion or a replacement of the primary school, do a pre-K through five building, get MSBA reimbursement for something that you actually want to live with for a long period of time. We're out of the woods on the primary school right now. We've, we've basically paid that debt. We're out of the MSBA window that we, I believe, that we, that we agreed to when we built that building, and we should be thinking of this as a pre-K through five building that includes MSBA funding. You build a new building, you stick it where TC Passio's is right now, you forget about all the nonsense of portables and disruption and kids walking through mud for two years and all that jazz, and you've got 57% reimbursement on what may well be $100 million project, but you've got something that's going to sustain you well beyond our lifespans.
And the primary school becomes your community center?
Or whatever we do with it.
We have an idea.
Or district offices.
Yeah.
Well, with preschool and...
But there's other potential, I think, too, for the use of Turkey Hill as a school. There's, there's a lot of work at the state level around innovation pathways, getting kids career-ready. So we've talked about the potential for the Turkey Hill becoming an annex to the middle high school, where you could have vocational courses set up for our students during the day. And it may actually be attractive enough that we start seeing students' choice in so that they can get access to these programs. And you can also open it up and, it could be a revenue generator, having adults have job training in these fields in the evening.
Once again, back to the earlier...
And then, and then MSBA...
You've got to figure out what it wants to be.
Yep. But then the MSBA reimbursement works.
Remains because it stays a school.
Right.
All right. Thank you. This would be a good video, YouTube video to come back to. All right. I will look for a motion to accept the Turkey Hill ADA study final report.
Motion to accept the Turkey Hill ADA final report.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have the Facilities and Grounds Report.
Which I just went over.
I'll look for, I'll look for a motion to accept the Facilities and Grounds Report.
Motion to, yeah, motion to accept the Facilities and Grounds Report.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Motion passes. Next up, we have paraprofessional contract ratification.
I don't know if Mr. Beardmore wants to take lead in the review of this one.
I am not prepared with notes to talk about this, so if you want to give me a minute, I could do that. I'm also having some technical problems.
It looks like it's not loading because it's blank.
So, basically, what occurred over the course of the last few months, if you recall, the, we agreed with the paraprofessionals to a one-year contract a year ago, which brings us through the current fiscal year. And the realization at the time was that there needed to be substantial changes made to both the language of the contract, dealing with issues such as how we pay paraprofessionals when they are acting as substitute teachers and those types of issues, that we were able to deal with from a language perspective during that one-year contract a year ago. But because of the financial constraints that we were in going into the override vote a year ago, and the fact that we had not allowed for the elasticity in a salary reserve to account for their needs and the teacher contract in the current fiscal year, we, they agreed to a very modest pay increase last year, along with the language changes that we made, with the proviso that we would revisit this as a three-year contract this year, thinking at the time that perhaps the Budget Committee will have come to some resolution, we would have had a municipal financial plan, and that municipal financial plan would have had the capacity to, to pay them frankly, at a competitive rate. And if you recall, we were having serious issues, and still have to a certain extent, serious issues hiring and retaining paraprofessionals. And quite a bit more churn than has been normal over the course of the last many years. Coming into this budget year, we basically put together a salary reserve plan that is in the current budget that has now been approved, that accommodates a change in the salary schedule for the paraprofessionals, that makes us substantially more competitive than we were, still frankly, still puts us in the bottom third of our comparable communities on an hourly basis, but does some other things that we believe are good for everybody. Number one, raising the pay of the paras, making this a more attractive place to come to and stay at. And we also made a move to a salary plan for the paras as opposed to an hourly rate. So going forward, with the adoption of this contract, we will be moving our paras to an annual pay plan, so a 26-week pay schedule, and all of the rights and benefits that come with a contracted, salary-paid employee as opposed to an hourly employee. Now, there will still be some incentives that will come in the, in the way of the language that we agreed to last year with respect to if we need a para to work at a, in a sub-capacity or that sort of thing. All of those additional pay options are carried forward, but effectively, they are going to operate as salaried employees. Also, to get that, we moved away from some stipends that have historically been paid in the way of restraints and diapering and those kinds of things, and, and were able to absorb all of those duties into the contract itself. I think, Dr. Gilson, have I accurately described what we've done?
Beautifully. The one, the one thing that I would say, a big picture point, as I, as I get out, as I talk with other districts, what, what has been amazing to me is that, you know, when I talk about the para and the move and the operational efficiency, because of the move to salaried, they're no longer the individual manual time sheets that we're signing off on for the hourly. And for me, that's all, that increases the operational efficiency. We don't need to be continuing to sign off on 64 time sheets every two weeks. So as I talk with other districts, too, like, some of them are like, "Oh, well, this is a great idea." So that was a big thing for, for me in terms of operational efficiency.
Okay. Can I add in about the stipends? The, the money that had been being paid towards stipends was put into the pay increases overall for the paras, which meant that that would then count towards their retirement, whereas before... Whereas before, when it was paid as a stipend, it did not go into their retirement.
So, and then the only, the last comment is... This is now my fourth collective bargaining agreement that I've been negotiating team for in the last three years. And they've all been different. But this one, our paraprofessionals are really... They are the lubricant in our organization. And if we did not have them, it would be trying to, like, run an engine without oil. They really make our schools, together with our secretarial staff, they make our schools run. And they are extraordinary partners to us and to our administration. And that was frankly evident throughout the negotiating process. Their negotiating team was tough and firm and did an excellent job at representing their membership. But they also worked in good faith and in good partnership with us throughout the process and as did their union representative. And I want to thank them for that. And I'm really glad that we're able to come to an agreement so long as we're able to ratify it here.
Going full-time, will this reduce the number of timesheets that they have to fill out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it will largely go from 64 currently to zero. There might be an occasional, as Dr. Gilson indicated, if somebody worked extra time because the special ed bus was late, they might submit a slip on that occasion for an hourly rate of pay. But largely, we go from 64 timesheets that have to be reviewed by the principal of the building and then again at my office and then submitted to Town Hall. We go from 64 to zero.
Yeah, I think that's great, and I think it's going to be more time on learning, too.
I think it can't be anything but wonderful to know how much a paycheck is every time. I mean, if you're... If it snows for three days or whatever, you're all kafue. And I think this is way better for everybody.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I would move that we accept the paraprofessional agreement as outlined.
Are those the same numbers?
Oh, do we want to mention the numbers? We have a motion on the floor.
We can... Okay. Second.
Any discussion? The only thing I would add, can you go over the COLA for the three years?
Yes, but I don't have that handy. And it was not... The problem was that we redid the salary structure entirely. So there are COLAs listed as FY '26, 4%, FY '27, 3%, FY '28, 2%. The problem is that it has actually substantially more than that because of the restru... The 27 and 28 numbers are actually COLAs for that year. But there is an economic impact this year, and I don't have the number in my head and I didn't prepare, that is basically the capacity of the salary reserve line that we put in the budget to account for the additional support for the paras.
All right, any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And just for the record, we did forward this to the town manager. We did invite her to be present for a vote this evening. But she's unavailable to be at this meeting tonight, so... But she is aware.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is third read policies of policy 3601.1 bus fee policy and 1303.1 advertising in schools. Did we hear any feedback from the public?
We did not receive any feedback from the public other than the one email inquiry that I received. But you heard that parent speak at public comment earlier this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Scoll, reading?
I did have one piece of feedback. Amy King spoke to me at a track meet, and she indicated that the language was interesting and that she hoped that the superintendent-designee could be either the athletic director or somebody in the athletic director's office. So...
I did have... I did have concern at the first read. I had concerns about the "as the crow flies" language. I did have a citizen reach out to me personally, not through email, concerned about the distance. I did further research, and I am still concerned that the current Lunenburg School Committee bus fee policy, specifically the application of the two-mile rule, does not fully comply with the requirements set forth by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 68. So after doing the research, it's related to DESI guidance on measurable distances. The policy currently defines qualifying distances using the geodesic as the crow flies measurement. However, the Massachusetts law requires that distances for determining transportation eligibility be measured portal-to-portal over a commonly traveled route, such as sidewalks or public ways. So using a straight-line method may lead to unlawful denial of free transportation to students who are legally entitled to it under the correct standard. So I think it's our legal and ethical obligation to ensure that the policy language reflects the current state law, to protect student access to transportation, and to reduce the risk of non-compliance. The recommended policy revisions that I have is to replace the geodesic reference with legally compliant language. So the current language of pursuant to state statute, students in sixth grade or lower living more than two geodesic "as the crow flies" miles from the school they are entitled to attend are entitled to busing at no charge. And my recommended revision is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 68. Students in sixth grade or lower who reside more than two miles from the school they are entitled to attend as measured portal-to-portal over a commonly traveled route, sidewalks or public ways, shall be entitled to district-provided transportation at no charge. We could potentially add to compliance statement of this policy shall be interpreted and administered in accordance with all applicable provisions of Massachusetts General Laws and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Regulations and Guidance.
That works. Do we need to make that change? Like, can we make that change now? Or do we have to take it back?
My thought is it seems to be a first read tonight, but open the thoughts.
Actually, I think we need to rework it, post it, and then bring it back for a first read.
All right.
Okay.
What's the practical effect of that? I thought we were going to be adopting this thing.
So in my opinion, as chair, we can post special meetings to continue the reads. We have done this in the past.
We could also just do a policy subcommittee, change the language, and then bring it back.
There are three meetings, three regular school committee meetings remaining in this school year.
I think we can also do special meetings, right? For the future meeting. This future school committee can also do special meetings as well.
Yeah, I guess my... And I don't want to be a stick in the spokes here, but we're charging the fee, right? So how can we charge the fee without an adopted policy?
Anthony, have you?
That was also my concern, as people are reaching out. And I told them that this policy is not a policy yet. It's a drafted policy that they should come to the meetings and share their opinions.
Anthony, have you looked at Section 68 yet?
Brian sent an email.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can't find the folder right now, so I'm really operating my hands behind my back.
It's in the...
Did you send that email to everybody?
I don't know, so I think I just sent it to you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I looked at it.
And Dr. Burnham.
Yeah.
It may be elsewhere.
I think we can get this done by May 21st. I mean, we could post a meeting of the policy subcommittee just for this. And then, I can't do it this Friday. And then we could get it done... Are you available next Friday, Laura?
Probably.
And then we could just have it done.
Well, there needs... Yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
Does the rule require us to do the first and second reads at school committee?
A school committee meeting.
Okay.
A regular school committee meeting?
No, it could be a special school committee meeting. We have done that in the past.
We could just do three in a row, three days in a row.
Three days in a row, you could do three days in a row.
I don't love...
You can do it all next week.
I'm listening.
That feels like bad faith, but it's not like we haven't had two reads in this one, so it's fine.
Yeah, we've done two waivers, and it's, you know... I think the challenge here is I'm less concerned about the read process. We can contort ourselves to make it work, as you've just outlined, as I am having an adopted policy when we're collecting fees. I think that there's a degree of urgency here to make this work that I think we got to figure out how to do this quickly.
I think my personal thought was, I even told the parent, like, sign up for the bus. Maybe you don't have to pay a fee, maybe you do. But I think we want to make sure they fill out the forms, whether we collect the fee.
The current policy is in effect, which is you got to sign up for the bus.
Yes.
Right? So this is a modification of that policy effectively, right? Or a replacement or an addendum to that policy.
It's additional.
Additional...
Additional, yeah.
So you still... Yes, I agree, you have to sign up for the bus.
Don't charge people interest.
Yeah, obviously, we wouldn't do that.
Reimburse people.
Yeah, okay.
They paid.
All right, I think that's a fair point.
Any other discussion? So we'll send it back to policy.
All right, well, this is why we get feedback, too. Good catch.
All right, I think we're ready for a third read of the advertising in schools.
I cannot find this. It's in the 2nd of April.
Yeah, it's in a different folder. Any volunteers for reading the 1303.1 advertising in schools?
I will do that.
Can I find it?
I can read it. Community relations, 1,000; gifts and solicitations, 1,300; advertising, sponsorship, and fundraising, 1303; advertising in the schools, 1303.1. The superintendent or their designee is empowered to solicit advertisements for property, real or otherwise, of the school district. This includes athletic fields, gymnasiums, digital property of the school, and any other means of monetizing school district property to generate ad revenue for the school. Ads shall not be placed in classrooms, the library, administrative offices, or any other area primarily used for instruction except gymnasiums. The superintendent or their designee shall set reasonable rates for such advertisement as they see fit. The following shall be barred from advertising on school property: any entity for profit or otherwise barred for advertising by state or federal law or regulation or school policy; any entity for profit or otherwise that generates income, however, derived from the monetization or sale of alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, gambling services, fantasy sports services, pornography, or firearms. The superintendent or their designee shall have final approval over the appearance and placement of all advertisements. Their decision about the advertisements, their appearance, and their placement are final and made with their sole discretion. The distribution of notices or advertisements by non-district affiliated groups are prohibited. Notices are permitted at the designation, at the designated location in the school office if such organizations are consistent with school committee policy and with the prior approval of the superintendent or their designee. Surveys, questionnaires, or similar documents which solicit and collect the personal information of students or families for marketing purposes are prohibited. I believe that's the end.
Any discussion? All right, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to accept the advertising in schools policy as read by Ms. Beardmore.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have new business action item class of 2023 account.
So the class of 2023 advisors, Ms. Walker and Mr. Kojil, contacted the superintendent's office to notify us that they have discussed with the 2023 class officers their wishes for the funds remaining in their account. They all agreed that they would like to donate the remainder of their funds totaling $4,644.36 to the high school to use for students in need. More specifically, they requested that the entirety of the funds go to the school secretary's annual gift card drive with distribution to students to be determined by the secretaries.
How very kind. That speaks very strongly for those class officers.
Yeah, this is super impressive. And I've been thinking over the course of the last several days about some of the commentary about a town meeting about Lunenburg being a special place and the whole general topic in our society around exceptionalism. And I tend to take a pessimistic view sometimes when I see comments, particularly on our social media channels. But this is really indicative of what we aspire to be in Lunenburg. And I think it's really extraordinary on the part of the class of 2023 and their leadership and their advisors.
They didn't need to do this. They're the class of 2023. They haven't had a reunion yet, and this was a very generous choice, especially considering last year or just in December when the secretaries were very low on funds and donations to the annual gift card drive. So I think this is a very powerful gift, and it's going to make a direct impact on students in our school. So thank you.
I agree. This is very impressive, and I agree with my colleagues, and thank you very much. All right, I'll look for a motion.
Is this a... How do we phrase this? Is this a donation or is this a... What is it?
I...
I think it is.
Yeah, accepted as a donation earmarked for the gift card drive.
I move that we accept the donation from the class of 2023 in the amount of $4,644.36 earmarked for the annual secretary's gift card drive.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, class of 2023. The next item on the agenda is action item on the grant submission approvals.
So you have some memos in your packet for tonight's meeting. I'd invite Juliana Hanscom to the microphone. She has been working on this with Dr. Bukas.
So you have in your packet, we tried to project all of the entitlement grants as well as any competitive grants that might be coming up. Those fall under Deb mostly, that she would like to apply for. So we tried to get it all in one place and do it at one time because a lot of times when these come up, it's a very short turnaround period. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I know she dropped it in quite a few days ago, I think, to give you the opportunity to look it over. I did also, under the hyperlink, the DESI grant entitlements, I did try to show you, I have documentation from FY '19 all the way up to this year. So you can see the progression and what we had gotten for those grants over the years as well. I think the only one that is a... Besides being the whole grant being in question, we did get word just a few days ago that Title III may be one that isn't for next year. And that was going to be a new one that we were going to be going for with North Middlesex being the lead consortium. But to be continued on that, we'll have to see what comes.
What does Title III do?
It's for our ELL learners, so it helps support our English language learners. We were hoping, through our Ola tier review, we did get cited on having a continuous curriculum, K through 12. And so we were going to... We had looked at the grant monies, and we were hoping to be able to tag those grant monies to be able to pay for... We have some curriculum now, but we don't have it the entire grade span. So this money in this grant would pay for the entire grade span. K through twelve. So fingers crossed that it does go through. But that, that's the newest one, um, that we haven't applied for before that we were looking to hopefully get next year.
Thank you for doing that. It's nice to have all that information in one spot.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your work on this. I did have a question of, is there any funding that we have to provide? Matching funds?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I don't know. Um, I don't believe the Prism one is, the STEM Supplies Grant, I don't believe, and I don't believe the SOA is any, is either, no.
Thank you.
And we would be eligible to apply for the SOA because we have been a recipient of that grant already.
Right.
Any other discussion, comments? All right, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the submission of the grants as for FY twenty-six as outlined.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have action item on the budget task force charge. So the chair of the select board reached out, um, having, wanted us to review the budget task force charge and make any recommendations.
Is the intention to create?
We convene?
Another task force?
I believe that is the, the purpose, to continue the work and try to finish and continue and actually make a product that might get us to the stage that we want to get to.
This feels like work. The select board should be coordinating. But.
I think a lot of times the work is done by subcommittees, like, we're gonna bring some municipal building design.
Is this the same charge as before?
It may be.
Exactly.
Yeah, maybe the exact same charge. So I have one recommendation and I don't know if it goes far enough, but if nobody else has any recommendations. Mine was to add under section two, tasks and responsibilities, uh, after the line about assessing the impact of any increased taxes and fees will have on any taxpayers and residents, um, to try to go a little further. So I, it might not go far enough, but my recommendation was develop and present at least three numerical scenarios, level services, enhanced services, and minimum long-term sustainable funding that include estimated override dollar amounts and clearly define the services or restorations each tier would fund or not fund. I want to kind of put a date, but I don't know if it's a good idea.
Can I, can I say, one thing that I would, I would have liked to have when we did this the first time is I would have liked to have the ability to reassess every financial commitment the town has. We just couldn't, like, no one would agree to do that.
What do you, can you expand on that?
Yeah, so when we did the budget task force the first time, the first two meetings, we asked, or I asked, we should look at this as things that we have to pay for, things that we should pay for, and things that we want to pay for. I want to know what our legal obligations are to pay for things like police, fire, roads, everything. I want to put it, I want to go down to zero, put things back on the table in order. And no one would agree to do that. Heather wouldn't even give me the information.
I agree with the first part, knowing what we need to do, because I think it's important to remind. I'm not sure we have to have such fantastic roads, but we do have to educate the kids of this town. I'm not saying I don't want fantastic roads.
One of them is an obligation.
Have, yes, having a list of the obligations makes sense. The second part of it, adding back in based on priorities, I, I think it sounds good on paper, but then it's, it's difficult to do because there are many things people expect from the town.
Sure. I mean, here's the thing, like, I'm glad that they're doing this again, but I think that unless people are willing to change the scope of what it is, we're just going to go around the merry-go-round again. We're going to get off the merry-go-round, we're going to be in the same spot. Like, we either need to take it seriously and compel everybody to put on the table what we have to pay for. Or, you know.
Well, that, I can, that's why I kind of focus on like tiered, like,
Yeah.
Make some tiered recommendations. This, you could have these services, these services, or these services.
I guess my thinking on this, Tony, is I'm not sure how relevant that is, and with all due respect. Like, we just went through a budget process where the town manager zeroed the pavement management line because we had an, you know, a, a windfall in chapter ninety and her thinking was, well, we can bridge it with, with pavement management. And there was such outcry, you know, from constituents throughout the town government side, including the DPW, but also members of the finance committee and select board, that was basically, if you zero that line, it's going to be very difficult over, you know, in, in, in the years coming forward to restore that line and chapter ninety is lumpy from year to year. And, but, but the, the lesson learned from that is that there is, there's the, what are you required to do and what is the political reality that we're living in? And the political reality that we're living in is people like their roads.
Sure.
So I, I think that, and, and whoever serves on this committee is, in addition to their duties on all the other committees that, that, that school committee members and select board members and finance committee members sit on, they're going to have to do these meetings every couple of weeks and try to return something in a timely manner. And, and I think what you're describing is a gigantic research project that may never end. I, I, you know, like, I mean, to your point, the reason why Heather didn't want to give you the information was probably not because she didn't want you to have it, because she didn't have it. And, and it was, and it was an additional burden on her and her office that she didn't want to, that she didn't want to deal with.
But let me just say this. I think that when the town comes to us and says, we want to assess every single item in your, all your line items in your budget. And we do that two years in a row, that maybe it's time for the town to do the same thing, right? Like, we got down to the point where we were saying, how many markers and tubes of paint are we giving to the primary school, Turkey Hill? Nothing like that on the town was, and it, it wasn't, I'm not blaming the town. I'm blaming one person in particular, our previous town manager. There was just absolutely, like, it wasn't like, she didn't say to me what you just said, which is, this is a gigantic lift, I need to go do this. She was like, we're not doing this. And I was like, okay. And I, I hear what you're saying about your political needs and, or your political limitations. But at the end of the day, when we go to town hall or we go to town meeting, we're talking about dollars and cents and we need to know, at least know what our bill is, right? Like, I think about it like a house. If I was looking at our household income, I would not be like, if I get rid of Netflix, everybody's going to lose their mind. Because if I get rid of Netflix, but it keeps the heat, then they can lose their mind and I don't care, right? I, we, we are not going to find a financial solution unless we know what the finances look like. And so I agree that it's a heavy lift and I agree that it's politically unpopular. But it's what we have to do. And if we keep, you know, like, the charge is basically the exact same. I know that people were unhappy the fact that we did not recommend an override. And, you know, like, that's fine, but like, we, we were given a charge and then no one would do what we asked. It was like.
So why is this time going to be different?
I, I mean, like, I don't know if it will be. Maybe different people can get different results. Or maybe Einstein's saying about insanity is true.
Yeah, I don't.
But that first sentence that says a three to five-year sustainable fiscal plan, that's what we're looking for.
Right, and we need to know what our bills are to do that, but no one wanted to do that last time.
I wonder if maybe towns aren't required to do anything.
I, I would like to, I, I would like to see what we're required to do. I think that part would be very useful in making the budgeting decisions.
I mean, I know that municipalities are obligated to provide an education. They can.
That's true. They have to do that.
They have to do that. There is a state law that says you have to have a special education director. There is no state law that says you have to have anybody else, so I don't know how that school district could work, but the state.
There is, there is a minimum amount of funding that we could provide, and we provide over the minimum.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine.
And I, yeah, that'll be, that'll come out and it should.
And I think we should do that. Like, everybody should be willing to put their cards on the table. And if we don't have something in the charge that says that, we're just going to reinvent the wheel. It's fine. If they want to do it again, it's fine.
But my, my thought is, I feel like, I feel like the, the budget task force should be going through the different departments, figuring out their needs and their wants and tiering them, each department.
Should do that.
And then combining it for a tiered town.
The budget task force isn't going to go through the school budget and decide what we need. We do that. So the, the, the department heads.
Yeah.
I think it should be a budget task force talking to department heads, figuring out their needs and tiering them.
Where Tony's talking about figuring out what's necessary and to.
I don't think this much.
But I don't think we go to that level. I think that's finance. Finance committee can go to that level of.
My, my problem with this charge a year ago was that this is largely the job of the finance committee, right? And by the way, the finance committee does review every department budget and has a conversation with every department head and does a line-by-line Q and A on those budgets with the department heads. I mean, that happens, public meetings every year. Now, the, the level of scrutiny you can argue with. And, and the point that I made earlier tonight, like, I think that our budget got ten times much, ten times the scrutiny of any other budget
Aye.
is also true, but the, the, the finance committee's role is enshrined in the charter. This is a special task force that is looking to do a very specific thing, which is lay it out. Here's, you know, big, big, medium, and little, or, 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 you know, level services, needs, and nice, you know, and, and ideal scenario, or whatever it is. And then map that out in terms of revenues and expenses. And the revenues, the revenue is, is the problem that we have right now. I mean, that's the problem, right? And, and I, I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't think that this is as hard as we're making it out to be. I, you know, I mean, my, my earlier point tonight, take our collective bargaining contracts, look at what we were spending a year ago on our expense lines, or, or originally budgeted this year on our expense lines, add in what we've added for athletics, which is our actual spend in athletics, and that's our budget. Project it out using those, using those contracts for the next three years and you've got a three-year plan, right? Now, it might not align entirely with a strategic plan from your superintendent and, and an actual in-depth analysis of the needs that are endorsed by the finance committee, but you can trend the expenses and, you know, beg from Peter to pay Paul to, to reprioritize your spending. And every department head is going to do that.
So do we have recommendations for the select board?
I would like this, there needs to be a strategic plan for the town, and that's lacking. What the future holds, what, what we're trying for so that we're not maybe in the future, in the same meeting, trying to build a town hall and a new park. Next year, what are we going to bump into? We're going to ask the town, we're going to tell the town that we'd also like a couple million dollars for Turkey Hill?
I think that that's a different thing.
No, I know, but they're not, they're not going to do that either. There needs to be a strategic plan as well, and this is difficult to do without having a, we have a strategic plan for the district. This is hard to do without a strategic plan to implement. This is just looking at the town as it is, but we've been frozen. Um, and a nitpicky thing is I would like any cuts in service to examine the effects of the cuts in service. If you're going to give a report, I would like cuts in service to detail if we have to cut the senior center, the effects that that would have on people in town. If we have to get rid of the fire department, I'm not saying that's what we should do. As a hypothetical, if we decide we can't afford a fire department, what are the, what are the consequences? Uh, if there are, if the schools continue to have to cut two million dollars from their budget every year, what are the consequences to the students? So I would like to see impacts, consequences on cuts.
I, I do think this is the last charge because the date is the same.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's the same thing, so.
I, you know, the, the more I'm thinking about this, I also think, um, time is of the essence here. But this is one of those things where the next school committee is going to have a lot more skin in the game than the current school committee.
Yeah.
You know? And, and, and I, I do feel like this is something that
You may want to bring up.
We may want to defer to
Until the next.
To the next school.
We can table this and put it on a future agenda.
No, we got to get stuff moving. Because they've got till November and then I'm going rogue with.
Yeah, yeah, the election's next weekend.
You're going to have a majority of the school committee and if, if, you know, I could think of one member in particular who's going to say, why did we agree to that? You know, and, and we don't have to. And, and I, I feel like, you know, believe me, there's plenty of things that are going to get blamed on us. I, I don't think that this is necessarily, particularly since we bought off on the last one. I, I don't think that this is necessarily one that I feel comfortable signing off on right now.
Look, can we, I'd make a motion to table this until the next school committee is constituted so that they can have a chance to weigh in.
I'll second that motion.
Can we make changes, send it to them and then say we're, the next committee's going to also want to look at it?
I, I, let's just, I mean, I don't think that, uh, two weeks isn't going to make a difference.
The, yeah, the budget task force is not convening.
Yeah, they're not going to be, they're not going to be made up in the next two, so the charge will be, changing the charge and waiting two weeks won't.
All right.
And the select board has heard our conversation and it is on YouTube.
My message to the select board right now
On YouTube, Select Board.
Time, 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 so us delaying it two weeks kind of undercutting me there.
No, it's not undercutting you because the, the budget task force won't start in two weeks. So if the charge is not ready in two weeks, but they wouldn't start until four weeks, it doesn't make a difference.
And I can let the chair of the select board know.
Okay.
Yeah. If, yeah, I would agree with you if they were starting immediately, but they're not going to start immediately.
No, they have to wait for their new boards to be constituted.
And appoint people and.
Yeah, it takes time.
Yeah, they still have to appoint their select board member. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Yeah, the motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on master planning committee.
Okay, this one's mine. So the master planning committee did meet and we hadn't met in like six months. And it was a multiple problem of not getting a quorum. And as a matter of fact, I can't tell you when we're meeting again because I can't find a quorum. But, um, this section that you have in your folder is what they put in for improving school facilities.
Is this just an image of?
That's my, yeah, I just took a, an image. I, I, I didn't know how to do it otherwise, so that's my techno, lack of technological skills.
I like the creativity.
You got it done.
So what they have, I'm just going to explain the columns so you have some kind of idea what you're looking at. The, the column on the left is what is proposed. So our first proposal is to renovate Turkey Hill. Okay? And that's what came up. These, these proposals came up through multiple meetings with citizens and all those surveys, okay? So that's, that's where all this came from. So the next one that says medium, that means that in the surveys, that was found to be a medium concern. The next one that says high, they put out a survey to the master planning committee, only four people returned the survey, they thought it was high. The next one that says somewhat has to do with a meeting that was had by, and you see it's blank there, um, on the top. Sorry, it doesn't say somewhat. Oh, yeah, it does, sorry. I skipped. I did what I didn't want you to do and skipped. Anyways, the somewhat comes from, um, a meeting that was had that the committee members were told that if they attended, they couldn't talk, so we didn't go. And, um, there were five people there. I wanted to get that column struck, but they overvoted me.
Was that the one where there was no notice?
It was, it, it was like in December or something. I, I don't know. Anyways. As far as the very is what the consultant thought we probably should be looking at initially, but then the next column is to review. So the high and the long term, don't worry about. So review means that they think that this, the master planning committee should talk about. should talk about whether we should renovate Turkey Hill. I said, "I don't think that makes sense to me. I think that the school committee needs input." So all of these things, some of them have a great deal to do with us, some of them really don't have a lot to do with us. So we have renovate Turkey Hill, develop a five-year school funding plan, you know, if the town had a funding plan, maybe we could, um, provide additional after-school care options for families of, children of working parents. I think we kinda do that. I, we can't do more, but anyways. Develop school programs linking seniors and childcare, um, develop a community garden, and incorporate gardening into school programs. I mean, these, these just came out of what the committee and some of the residents wanted. So you see this long list. Some of them make sense for us, some of us don't. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this this evening, but I need to, before, I am not the representative anymore, I need to capsulize what your thoughts are. So does it make sense to you, we have two choices, we could go through all this now, or, if you want it, you could each send to me or to Kate, so that it doesn't go all to me, and she can give it to me, and I'll compile what your thoughts are, is, and I would just use high, medium, or low priority. And if it has nothing to do with us, say, "That's not us." If, if you wanna go through them all now, or if you have a question about any of them, I pretty well understand what they are.
Can, can I ask a question, Carol? I'm trying to read this, 'cause I-
Yeah, you can ask.
Why are these the things that are selected for us?
Because that's what came through the surveys, and through the big meetings that we had, like, we had one at Smokestack, we had some at the, um, uh, senior center, you know, we had like three or four big meetings in the community, and that's what people wanted to see, to improve school facilities, funding, and opportunities. That title came from one of those big meetings.
Got it. Okay.
So- So these are not devised by people who necessarily know anything about schools?
I'm happy to participate in giving you feedback to satisfy your need. I don't think that any of this is worth the screenshot that it's captured on. Um, I just, uh, this is the school committee's domain. The master plan has specific things that I do understand it needs to visualize for the town, but it's largely a zoning and public works exercise from my perspective, not necessarily a set the priorities for the school committee exercise. But I understand there's a need to participate, and we should participate, but the reality is, is that there's, there's no, there's no obligation here, right?
Right, I mean-
It's a, it's a, it's a document that sets a path that the town is very likely to begin diverging from the second it goes into a-
'Cause nobody can afford it anyways, which is what I tried to explain. So, um, you know, I mean, some of these things are great ideas, but they're not necessarily for us, like develop a universally accessible playground.
Yeah, I mean, and-
I mean, some of them are really good things to do.
The problem here is because six people show up at a coffee roaster thing-
But it's not us. Right, exactly.
Does not mean that we, or the town, is gonna go for funding any of this stuff, so-
So I agree. I don't dispute it at all.
In the essence of time, I think it's, can be just a feedback to you or Kate.
Yeah, if you can just give me a low, medium, high, not our problem, then doesn't belong in the school.
For each one of the entries, is that what you want?
Yes, for each one that have to do with us.
Got it.
So not the whole thing. There were 150 in total.
And for what it's worth, like, I, I think that the master plan is an important document. It's an important document to have and affect officially, but relative to steering school committee priorities and policies, like, I, I just don't think that it's pertinent.
And are we sending this to Kate or her?
Send it to Kate, and then she can give me all the answers, and I will compile them. Please don't spend any time compiling. You are busy enough, and so is Liz. I will do it.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for participating, Liz.
If you could send this out, like, in a week, if that's reasonable?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I don't, can you remind me?
I will remind you.
Lot going on right now.
Send it tomorrow. All right, next item on the agenda is reports. Go down the line.
Um, okay. Um, oh, the 300th, well, I'm not on that as a school committee member. Uh, come see me at the vendor fair on Saturday, and I have Lunenburg 300th anniversary stickers. They're very bad stickers. I made them. Uh, but we're gearing up for the 300th anniversary of Lunenburg in 2028, and that is very exciting. Uh, super exciting. And we'll have a survey, and we'll be getting names for people to volunteer, 'cause that's gonna take a lot of work. Um, Leaf met and, uh, welcomed a new member who was named Nancy Murray, but not the one who works in town. Uh, they filed for nonprofit status, and they are waiting for the IRS, and as of this week, they are still waiting for the IRS, because things have gotten very slow there for some reason. Uh, so they cannot accept donations until they get that, but they are, we, we are eagerly awaiting that. Um, we haven't done reports in a while, sorry. And, um, the wellness committee met, and we got reports, and they are doing a survey of students about student behavior, although maybe they've done it already. I'm excited to see the results. Mm-hmm, that's it.
Uh, the high school advisory committee met on the 27th of April. We discussed, uh, the budget and its effects on the high school. Um, we discussed the registration process and the fact that some of these budget, uh, items are going to have a delaying effect on class registration, and students are unlikely to see their schedules before the end of the year, as has been the tradition over the course of the last few years, which is unfortunate, but a reality. Um, we discussed, uh, end-of-year calendar. Uh, we discussed, uh, the, um, uh, the student activity fee was actually the, the majority of the discussion. Um, and, uh, received some additional information from the, uh, from the leadership. That's it.
Okay. Um, the middle school council met the day before your council met, whatever day that was. Um, and we talked about the MCAS schedule, we talked about the handbook, um, we approved the minor changes that Mr. Santri had submitted, and we talked about the DC trip, that is by bus this year, and, um, anyone who requested financial assistance did receive it. And that's what I got.
Um, PTO met on Monday. I hung around and listened until we had our meeting start. They were meeting with Lions Club and with some of the people that were bringing cars. Uh, the drive event, uh, the car show event was well-attended last year. It was on a perfect weather day, and everybody seemed to have a good time. I think they will hopefully have equally good weather and better attendance, though it was really well-attended last time. The PTO also reached out and wants me to ask the superintendent, what will happen with the room that the PTO uses for storing its stuff at TC Passios? You wanted to stay there?
So the TC Passios building is not a school building. Um, they were authorized to have access to that space, I believe, based on, at the time, Mr. Londa's recommendation, and the town manager at that time agreed. Um, but I don't have any authority over, over whether or not there will be available space in the remaining portion of the TCP building that will not be shut down. They, there may be space.
Should they reach out to Chris Ruth or the town manager?
I got it. I'm doing it right now.
Anything else for you, Mrs. Gullnbrini?
Nope.
Uh, the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee met before the town, town meeting to prepare the presentation, and then at town meeting, the vote did not pass. It will still be on the ballot, uh, in a week and a half. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open up to public comment from the public. If you're on Zoom, just, uh, raise your hand. Mr. Passios?
Yes, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Dave.
Yep, thanks. Hi. Uh, Dave Passios, President of Jefferson, New Hampshire, and everybody in Lunenburg knows who I am down there. Um, still a member of the general public of the, uh, this beautiful country of ours, the United States. Uh, I came in late to the meeting, but I got a chance to listen to a couple of your members', uh, comments about the, uh, bringing the, uh, task force back online to try to do something again in the next year. And at the end of the conversations, and the end of the select board meeting last evening, um, I made some very marked comments relative to the challenge that I had tasked that select board with last year, after, shortly after the elections, where there was so much infighting. And my comment to them at that time had been to, "You need to get over your issues, and you need to bring the town out of the hole that it's in, and lead this town. The executive branch is the, the branch that needs to deal with our budgetary problems, and passing it off to a committee that is then gonna have to go back to paid employees and department heads to get information, digest it, and then spit it back again to the select board, uh, and the executive branch is just a total waste of time." I told them that it's their responsibility to run the town, um, and use every resource available to them to do that. My final comment was, if they wanna seat a committee, I and a lot of people that were involved in town government over the past five years, were adamant that they needed to seat a committee in preparation for a complete charter revamp and a reorganization of the town's entire operations to bring this town, bring the town of Lunenburg up to date and up to where it should be with the size of the population it has. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Any other public comment from the public? All right, seeing none. Any public comment from the committee?
Um, I wanted to say, welcome to our incoming superintendent. I'm very excited. This was a big decision. Um, and thank you to Dr. Burnham, because you are the measuring stick I, I've really been thinking about, as we've been thinking about the decision for superintendent. Um, you're gonna be very hard to replace. Um, and I think there's a lot of things that you do that we don't even realize, uh, because you make it look effortless. So, uh, I'm, yeah, it's, it's very momentous meeting, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Beardmore?
I just wanna repeat all the thank yous from earlier. I won't belabor it. Um, I did wanna, I forgot one thing that I wanted to say earlier, though, um, relative to our grade. One exception for that, which is an A plus, 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 is I was so excited last week that we are like on the cusp of finishing the primary school air conditioning program.
Yay!
I cannot tell you how excited I am about that.
That was the first thing I worked on at school.
I, it's been a long road, and it's not done yet, but boy, we, we are so close. And, uh, we may have everything we need to do procedurally to get there at this point. So I'm very excited about that, and very proud of the stick-to-itiveness of our administration and this committee to make sure that that, that project happened.
And thank you to David Greenblatt as well.
David Blatt, yeah.
I'm sorry, David Blatt. I, I have the word green on there because-
Yes, yes.
And Dave Passios from Green Community.
Yeah, thank you. That, there was a lot of volunteer effort that went into that, um, and our kids are, and staff are gonna be better off because of it, and the school's gonna last longer.
And if anybody's interesting, I'll be interested, I will be having a side conversation after the meeting tonight about the weeds at, uh, at, uh-
Oh, my God.
I actually have a lot of opinions about those.
How could we do that? An hour and a half.
Can I, can I just say one other thing?
Yeah, the public comment, yes.
Public comment. Um, I forgot to thank somebody. I didn't have time to write everything down, and I knew I would forget. I wanna thank PAC. I wanna thank PAC for everything they do and being everywhere, particularly John, who's very dedicated and comes to everything. But I wanna thank PAC for the job they do, that the people in this community are so much better informed by what you do. So I thank you very much.
Amen.
John was at town meeting and all of our meetings last week, and all of the meetings this week.
I think I saw more than my wife.
Yeah. I also wanna thank my wife and my children, and if you are up, go to bed. All right, uh, topics for future discussion. Anything you wanna add?
Yeah, you guys got anything?
I got nothing. Good luck.
Last chance.
I'll just, wanted to follow up, because there was a request for a, a state of the state of the schools report. Still working on that. Um, I think it's gonna be rather lengthy, uh, but I would like to be able to pass it along to each of the members who are exiting the committee, so that you can give me feedback if I missed anything or something that you wanna see in it, so that, um, by the last meeting, uh, it'll be completed, and, um, that document will be available to the incoming administration, as well as the incoming school committee.
Oh, that-
Can I just add, do you think that we should do an exit interview with you? Would you object?
I would not object. That's fine.
Okay.
I would love, yeah.
Just, yeah, something informal. I don't, and then we'd present it to the full school committee.
Okay.
Let's just take her out to lunch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, seeing no other topics for future discussion, I'll look for a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, and then adjourn after.
All right, Carol, second your last adjournment.
Oh, second.
All right, we're gonna roll call vote. Ms. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Ms. Arshinbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gullnbrini?
Yes.
And a yes for myself. Thank you. Good night, everyone. And a yes for myself. Thank you. Good night, everyone.